It's seven thirty. I'd like to call the order. The February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty-five Old Bridge Township Planning Board Meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever.
Roll call, please.
Mr. De Palma?
Here.
Mr. Lanning?
Here.
Mayor Walker?
Here.
Mr. Lowry?
Here.
Mr. Rena? Is absent. Mr. Petty?
Here.
Ms. Musella?
Here.
Mr. McGyserick?
Here.
Mr. Brennan?
Here.
Mr. Ferrara?
Here.
And Ms. Cannon.
Okay, first order of business, we're swearing in of our professionals.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, we have a number of professionals on behalf of the board this evening, so we have a number of applications as well, so we're gonna do a swearing in at the beginning to cover all of the testimony given at this hearing tonight. Would you please raise your right hand? What's that? Oh, sorry. My apologies. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have the minutes of January twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-five. Do we have any additions, deletions of those minutes? If not, I'd like to have a motion to approve.
Move it.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Absent.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McGyserick?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry.
Yes. Okay, next, we have adoption for amended two thousand and twenty-five Planning Board Rules and Regulations.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, at the last meeting, we adopted, the board adopted its updated rules and regulations for two thousand and twenty-five, but then there was a discussion with the board as to make some amendments to Section Two, colon, six dash four with regard to providing where it allows for electronic evidence to be submitted, but allowing for paper plans and documents to be submitted upon request by the Planning Board and setting forth a procedure to do so. I have made those revisions and, or proposed amendments, it's on page nine and ten of the document that has been submitted with the board, and if the board's in favor of that, then we just need to have a motion second and a roll call to adopt the amended minute, excuse me, the amended rules.
Okay, any comments about the, okay, movement, Mr. Brennan, move it, second?
Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McGyserick?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry.
Yes. Next, we have a resolution. That would be, Vina, your resolution.
So, this is a resolution authorizing me to conduct an area investigation study for three parcels that are located along County Route five sixteen. These three parcels, Danny's gonna just, in a moment, display it on the screen. These three parcels are adjacent to the Manino redevelopment plan area or the YMCA property. And the front two parcels have been vacant for a significant amount of time. There have been applications that were filed in the past in front of the zoning board but never came to fruition. I believe they qualify for redevelopment. There has been, the owner has been interested in redeveloping the sites for a long time now. So this is just the first step in the investigation process. I also recommend it to the council that we include the Blonder and Tongue property because that is in a bad shape. If you look at the parking lot, the parking lot is in poor condition. The building itself is not fully utilized. So I think it would be a good idea to include that parcel since it is adjacent to it. And any redevelopment efforts that go into these three properties probably will help us connect Jake Brown Road to White Oak Lane, which has always been one of the goals of our master plan and our circulation plan. So this is just the first step. I request the Planning Board to authorize me to conduct a study. Once the study is complete, like every other redevelopment study and plan area, I will be back in front of the Planning Board for a public hearing on the area investigation.
Okay, thank you. Any questions to my right? To my left? Okay, Vina, just one quick question, is Blonder and Tongue done, or are they still operating there?
They are still operating, but I know that their, they have an attorney and they had, they were trying to file an application with the planning office for redevelopment of the site when I told them, wait a minute, I'm already looking at these two adjacent parcels, why don't I include it in the redevelopment study? So they are in operation, but I don't think they are fully operating. It's underutilized at this point.
Okay, thank you. I'll move that resolution.
Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McGyserick?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry.
Yes. Okay, next, consistency review, amended crossroads redevelopment plan, Vina?
Sure. Board members, you may recall, this, the crossroads redevelopment plan was adopted by the council in two thousand, and it covers a lot of properties in and around Texas Road and Marlboro Road. In the past, the plan was written in two thousand, it was amended in two thousand and six, again, it was amended in two thousand and eight. However, we have not really seen any development on these parcels in the past. The one property that was recently developed was a hundred percent municipally sponsored project, which was part of our third round, and that was in front of the Planning Board not too long ago, almost four years ago. So we have been reevaluating the plan, but again, the plan area is huge, so we have been looking at specific properties and then amending sections of the plan. These are three parcels within the crossroad redevelopment plan, which were originally planned for planned retirement community. It's been twenty years, there has been no development, there have been interested developers that came in the past, but then nothing really came out of it. The land is significantly constrained with wetlands, there are very few upland areas. So this is just a plan amendment to that specific, those three parcels. And it is not inconsistent with the master plan because when we last amended our master plan, we had made recommendations that such underutilized, large underutilized parcels within the township must be reevaluated for their redevelopment potential. And the redevelopment agency has been acting on those recommendations. I have been covering different areas, just like the previous one, we have been looking at different sections of the town to see which areas can benefit from the redevelopment status. This is an existing area investigation, area that was already designated, but the plan needs to be revisited because it is kind of outdated. We have an application tonight, too, which is also part of the crossroad redevelopment plan, and you will see that some of the design standards and waivers are really outdated, it needs to be updated. So we are just taking care of the larger portion of crossroad redevelopment plan. And it is not inconsistent with the master plan recommendations.
Very good, thank you. Any questions to my left? All right. Do I have a motion to accept that?
Move it. Yeah, Mr. Chairman, actually, just to clarify, there is a resolution that was circulated that would be adopted by the board, that would be sent to the, sent back to the township, a committee or council, excuse me, if that, if you agree with the testimony that was provided by Ms. Swann.
I need a second, did I get a second?
Second.
Mr. De Palma?
Yes.
Mr. Lanning?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Musella?
Yes.
Mr. McGyserick?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry.
Yes. Okay, next, we have an applicant, we have three applications tonight, we have a very packed agenda. We're gonna allow forty, forty-five minutes for each application. So the first one's gonna be Stenton Construction, major preliminary final site plan with a C variance.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just on procedures, just, we have a lot of members, still, a lot of members of the public here, because of the way we're going to handle this, some of these applications might not get completed this evening. So what we're going to do is, after each witness is testified to, we will open to the public for questions of that witness's testimony. And the public comment, general public comment with regard to any testimony the public wants to give or any other information or documents it wants to present would have, will be at the end after the close of the application. So unless we get to that tonight, given our tight agenda, that might not be until another meeting when this gets carried to, but we're gonna see how far we can get in all these applications.
Good evening. Yes. When it goes green, you'll be good to go.
There you go, okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Mayor, nice to meet you. Council, we're here to present an application for a site plan for Stenton Construction, specifically the Pine Tavern, located at one five one, New Jersey, Route thirty-four in Old Bridge. I have with me three witnesses, two will testify, the other is the owner, and he's here also, and I want to introduce him first. Mr. Stefano Bon Giovanni, Bon Jovi, he's the owner of the, of the property. However, the restaurant is managed on a daily basis, and probably the person with most knowledge is his son Luigi Bon Jovi, who is here, and he's gonna be the one who I'm going to be asking some preliminary questions. And then we're gonna present our engineer to answer the letter dated February twenty-sixth from your experts. Is that fair?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Bon Jovi, Luigi, when did you acquire this property? What year?
Let me just swear in the witness first.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
No, no, no problem. Would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you want to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Bon Jovi, what was the year that you acquired the property?
Two thousand and seven.
Okay. And from two thousand and seven to today, has the size of the property that you acquired changed in any way?
No.
And at some point, could you explain to the board what business you have there?
It's a restaurant.
With a bar, correct?
With a bar, yeah.
All right. And you've been operating it continuously since two thousand and seven, correct?
Yes.
Has there ever been any issues at that bar?
No.
Family place?
Family restaurant.
Hoping some of the board members know where it is. In June or July of two thousand and twenty, there was the pandemic, and at some point, you created an outdoor patio, correct?
Yes.
And that outdoor patio was used because we couldn't have any indoor seating, correct?
Yes.
And you've kept that outdoor patio at the restaurant, is that correct?
Yes.
And approximately how many seats or tables do we have there?
It's fifteen tables, about sixty seats.
And what are the operations of that outdoor patio? What's the date, the time that you have that used?
From eleven to close.
Is it year-round?
No, very seasonal.
So what's the season that normally goes?
I would say it starts from June till about September.
And from June to September, is it always open, or is there any days that it might close?
Well, since it's, it's not a covered area, so we are, you know, basically at the sacrifice of the weather. So when it's too hot, we don't use it, when it's raining, we don't use it, so.
So it's not used for the full three months of the year?
No.
And from September until May, you don't use it at all?
Not at all.
Inside the bar and the restaurant, could you tell the board how many seats are in that bar and restaurant area?
Yeah, the bar has twenty seats and the restaurant one fifty.
And outside, you said there were sixty seats, and there's a total of one seventy inside, correct?
Yes.
And you indicated the hours of operation for the outdoor seating, what's the hours of operation for the bar itself?
For the bar itself?
Yes.
Monday through Thursday, eleven to nine, and the weekends is eleven to ten, Sunday, twelve to nine.
And how many employees drive cars to your business?
I would say about, like, five, maybe six, depends.
And just trying to address some of the items that are in the letter, the expert, our expert will present more testimony. The garbage collection, you have two dumpsters?
Two dumpsters, recycle and trash, picked up three times a week.
They both get picked up three times a week?
Both of them, yeah.
And your deliveries into the restaurant, when do they normally take place?
I would say they normally take place during the week before eleven AM, you know, quickly, I would say.
And you just touched upon it, what is the time that's spent when delivery comes in?
I would say ten minutes or less.
And these deliveries, are they just straight job trucks, or are they big tractor trailers?
They're just like box trucks, sometimes smaller than box trucks, more like vans.
And going back to the property, when you first bought it, was it paved?
No.
What was it, just dirt area?
It was a dirt area, yeah.
And did that create mud during the rainy seasons?
Yes, a lot of mud.
And that mud traveled out onto the roadways, is that correct?
Yes.
And at some point, you decided it would best, you paved the parking lot, correct?
Yes.
And when did you do that?
That was at the end of two thousand and nineteen.
And as a result of paving it, that dirt and dust and mud is no longer an issue, right?
Correct.
I have nothing further.
Our professionals, could you please?
I don't have any questions for this witness, Mr. Chairman.
Tim? Vina?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, anybody to my left, to my right? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, before I call my next witness, can I present to all the board members?
Sure. Excuse me, can you get me the second page? Page two. Before we go to the next witness, I'm gonna open it up for public comments on the testimony that was just given. See no hands, close that portion. Your next wish, witness, please.
I'd like to present our next witness, which is our expert, Mr. Sri.
Please raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you want to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And could you please spell your name for me, just so I can write it down for record?
Sri, S-H-R-I, last name K-O-T-D-A-W-A-L-A, Manalapan, New Jersey.
Thank you, appreciate that.
I'm a professional engineering in state of New Jersey since nineteen ninety-eight, and I have testified at multiple times here and multiple locations in state of New Jersey. And today, I'm doing the same thing, so I request you accept my qualifications.
You're accepted, thank you.
Thank you. So as we can see on the description?
Hold on, Sri, hold on. Sri, I'm not gonna, I'm gonna call you by Sri only because it's easier to pronounce your name that way, sorry, everyone. That's all I call him every time. Sri, you've been approved by the board as an expert on, as it pertains to this project. You and I have reviewed this letter February twenty-sixth that was given to us by the board experts. I'm gonna ask you to address the letter item by item in your testimony.
So briefly, if you can see the site on an exhibit here, it's two thousand and fifteen, how it used to look, and this site is always, never been a pristine forested land where applicant paved the parking lot. So I just wanted to show, it used to be, before, before Wawa got constructed, there, there used to be a road going right next to the restaurant. So that area which applicant developed was always being disturbed, never forested, never had, like, native trees or something, which was there. And now, currently, if we can flip the page, the next page is shows like what we did, what the applicant did instead of that vacant area, which was kind of a gravelly parking lot versus paved parking lot with striping and, and many other things. So we started with like about point seventy-nine acre of impervious coverage, to he took it to point ninety-five acres. And henceforth, we required stormwater management system, which already we designed a one subsurface stormwater management system so we can meet the current DEP stormwater regulations. As well as we have, because of the created parking lot, which is very, like, it covers almost entire site, so we have, we are in a need of multiple design waivers and variances. So I'm, I'm gonna go through that list, what we need, and why we are needing those variances. So I'll, I'll start with like the.
Before, before you start in that, just for procedural purposes, are we gonna mark, well, we have to mark these as exhibits, I'm thinking, just because they are different, we'll mark one of the two thousand and fifteen as Exhibit A one, and the other one is Exhibit A two. And if you could just, please, just explain for record purposes, the origins of these documents, is it something that you got from a drone, did you get it from the internet? You know, just to, you know, to give some foundation for the document.
Yeah, these maps are NJGIN, aerial maps, it's available on NJGIN website as well as NJGO web. So they are the standard two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty aerial photographs of the site.
Perfect, thank you, I appreciate it.
So while creating this new parking lot, as we see that we are almost touching the property lines at the, at the end towards Wawa on Route thirty-four and on the north side. So like, first, I'll start, one, like, one is a landscape area ratio, where township requires that forty percent area to remain green. General common language, which we are not able to do it as we, we can see it here. So that is one kind of a variance we are looking for. The second one is mentioned is outdoor storage and a trash enclosure. We are using two of the parking space on a northwest corner. Right there, we have two currently dumpsters are there, so they are not complying with the rules. So what to enhance that area, and we had a comment from your professionals where they wanted us to put the, like, trees around it and as well as the fencing. So we will be putting fencing, as well as we will add a row of like evergreen trees on about three sides. So the visual will be improved currently, now you drive in and you see those two straight dumpsters. So, so that change we will make in our plan when we, we go back to the drafting table. The other one was residential use buffer, because on the north, we have a residence, there is a house. So typically, we require a buffer of fifteen minimum versus we have four points six, seven. So, because our parking lot is very close to the neighbor, neighbor's property lines. So to negate the negative effect, we are putting six feet board-on-board fence, as well as we are putting evergreen tree line. So car headlights will not like, like, neighbors won't see that, especially only when there's one neighbor, they won't see it. So those two measures we have, we are applying to reduce the negative effect of not having proper residential buffer, residential use buffer. And there's another one is called a right-of-way buffer, which is the right-of-way buffer from the dock road as well as Route thirty-four. And there's another one is we call it right-of-way buffer, which is the right-of-way buffer from the dock road as well as Route 34. Both are going to be missing here, and, and we are seeking the waiver, same thing. The evergreen trees will not negatively like harm the drivers on Route 34 as well as the dock road. The other one is same, like where we required non-residential use to a residential use, which is in our case. Same thing, 50 feet buffer is required, we will have a 4.67 square feet of buffer. And then parking area setback, we, we require like five feet minimum, we are at 4.9. If really board and professionals are hard on us saying, no, we can accept it, we will be able to change our plan a little bit, and he will make some alteration in parking lot, and we can have it five feet instead of 4.9. So. And this are the basically the list of like a variances we created because of the newly created parking lot. And we will be seeking a relief here from the board in that matter.
Thank you, Sri.
And there's a one more is a sidewalk requirement. Typically, when you see a new development, we always have a sidewalk, but this is an existing facility, never had a sidewalk. And whatever the addition we have done, we would not have a sidewalk. And the owner told us that they are, they have never seen someone coming walking in there using a sidewalk to the restaurant. So that piece of property will not have a sidewalk.
There's also no sidewalk across the street in the water, correct? To the right?
Yes, yes.
So it'd be consistent to maintain the green space between the curb and the prop, and the property?
Yes, that, that green space is on right of there.
Thank you. Want to talk about the parking?
The parking space, today, the numbers we wrote on our plan, there is some minor couple of parking spaces plus minus, but today the owner has testified. We calculated the number of seat and we came up with 90 parking spaces required. Our plan shows 86, and I believe, I'm not really sure, but I, we might get three EV charging parking space credit. So we are at 89, and required is 90, so we are one parking space short of the required parking space, based on 150 seats, 20 bar seats, and 60 outdoor seats. So the, our calculation shows us that we are short of one parking space and-
And that's if all seats are full?
It's, 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 we, we go by theoretical numbers. If this many seats, this many parking required, so we are short by one parking space.
I understand, but just for the board's understanding, 60 of those seats are in that patio area, which the testimony was that it only functions three months out of the year and not every day in those three months. So if you take those 60 seats away, then your number requirement will be way below 90, is that correct?
Correct. And currently, as we saw before, there was, there were no trees on the site. We are trying to enhance the look of the site. We are planting 86 evergreen trees, 23 shrubs, and a three shade trees. So altogether, we will see about 112 trees here. Currently, there's nothing. Yes, some like landscaping trees, but. So these are the improvements in exchange of something which is done wherever we were in non-conformance. So we request board to grant us those waivers.
And from your testimony and what the proposal of the site plan that's before us, what is your opinion in terms of its overall look compared to what it looked like prior to our application?
As we can see both pictures, 2015 and now, it was never a pristine land and with putting a nice fence and this 112 trees. I'm hopeful that it's going, it's going to look much better than what we have now and even in 2015, before the applicant did the work. And all about the technical comments are here, multiple about our stormwater management system, the way we have designed the stuff, and we have, we have, we have the details shown, construction details, and we will comply with all of those comments by the professionals. And we don't see any difficulty in achieving the comments.
That's the end of our testimony.
You, you're finished? You're finished?
Yes, I'm finished.
Okay. Okay, let's go to our professionals.
All right, I just wanted to go over some of the landscape things. In the back there, they're proposing a row of skip floor, which is a really nice plant, it'll get like eight feet tall, five, six foot wide. I mean, problem is it's kind of a narrow space in there. And in addition to, to the shrubs, I see that you're proposing a fence. I'm not sure what kind of fence that is, or that's going to make it even less. So I would, you know, I would lose the fence, basically, just to give the plants. I mean, if you want them to, to survive and thrive, you, you know, you got to take that. And I know the intent, I don't know if it was a solid fence or what it was, but
Yes.
the two aren't going to coexist, you know.
The owner agrees that we won't put the fence but the trees.
What's that?
We'll put the trees and no fence.
Yeah, I think that would work better. I mean, and then along Route 30, was it 34? We're looking at the pictures from Google Earth, we can see that you do have some plans out there, some of them look like they're kind of on the way out. So what I would do is try to supplement them with other plants, you know, use some ornamental grasses, some flowering shrubs, like maybe St. John's Wort, some things will give it a little color, some seasonality. And we can help you with the plant selection. And, and when you get to the intersection with Dock Road, I think you could, and I don't want to speak for the town, but that's a, that's a township road, right? I don't know if the town would mind if you extended that landscape area out into the buffer as long as you agree to maintain it. And that would give you the flexibility to, you know, put some more variety out there and make it look a lot better, and it'd be more effective, for sure. As you get to the intersection, you can see you're proposing for lawn there, I would just make that part of the landscape bed, so you can spread some of those things out. And some of the plants you got in there are kind of low, I would, I would substitute some other ones that might be more effective. But again, we can, we can work with you on that.
No, we, we agree. We will, we will, like, we will propose a plan and then we'll make changes as per the comments from you guys.
I think that's, that's a better idea, like during compliance review, you work with the planning engineering office, I mean, the consultants to come up with a landscape plan that is acceptable to the township and works for you guys as well.
One more, one, one item that I, we missed is the sign, we're proposing a sign to be installed.
We are proposing a ground mounted sign, so in case if you're coming from the like Wawa side for the Dock Road, there will be a ground mounted sign, eight feet by six feet, which allows, like just as kind of visibly, it makes pine tavern visible. We have a sign, existing sign on Route 34, but this will be a ground mounted sign, not a freestanding sign.
Just so everybody knows where the driveway is, I guess.
So regarding the sign, what we asked for in our, in our memo, is, is the details on the existing sign. The way that our ordinance is written, is that a, a secondary sign on, on the, on the secondary roadway is permitted, but it has to be half the size and half the height of the sign, the sign on the primary roadway. If, if, if we don't, if, if you have that information, we can determine whether you need a variance.
We, we have it, it's in the plan, but I have not narrated properly, because we sent someone and drew this out of my office. But we will, we will comply with that half the size requirement. We are not basically looking for a big sign.
You're not looking for relief for that sign?
Yeah, we're not looking for it.
Okay, that's, that's the main thing.
Just a small sign.
And, and for the board's edification, the applicant, the sign that were, the proposed sign on Dock Road is a fairly modest sign. It's a two foot by six foot, the actual copy is two feet, the size is three feet high, six feet wide, so it's 18 square feet, which is again modest by standards that we normally see. So as long as the sign on the roadway is at least double that, you'll be fine, you don't need relief.
Sri, can, instead of having a backlit sign, would you care if it is externally illuminated? Because these acrylic signs over a period of time become an issue, they are not aesthetically pleasing. I would rather like a ground sign that is, that highlights the lettering than have a backlit sign.
Externally illuminated?
Yeah.
So basically, you would have spotlights. Yeah, it would be externally illuminated, shining on the sign, instead of being internally illuminated.
So over a period of time, maintenance of those signs becomes a problem, they start looking very shabby, cracks develop. Instead, if you have an externally lit sign, it looks prettier. So we have been encouraging all business, yeah, it's aesthetics.
You don't have a problem with that? No problem.
Thank you, thank you.
Are we done?
I would just, you know, it would be great for this landscape beds out there, just to help them grow and, and survive during hot summers, to put some drip irrigation in there, I would recommend that.
And the applicant did utter the, the magic words that I always like to hear, that they'll comply with all of our comments, so that, that's great. The, with regard to the, the variance relief that they need for the parking, given the fact that it's really triggered by the seasonal seating, I really don't have any objection to the relief that they're seeking. They're actually only falling short by a few parking spaces. And like I said, that's triggered by the 60 outdoor seats, which actually is 20% of that, oh, I'm sorry, 20 of those total 92 required spaces. If not for that, they would be overparked actually by a little bit. So given that, I, I don't really have an objection. There is some design relief, I don't know, Sri, if you covered it, I didn't, I didn't follow. As far as the size of the spaces and the width of the drive aisles, could you just comment as to the functioning of the spaces? Obviously, they're out there right now, maybe you or the applicant can speak to how that works out for you guys, guys currently.
What we have is typically, old beach requires 10 by 20 parking spaces, we always come back to the board and ask for 9 by 18. But in, in this case, the striping and all that was done, not as a surveyor did it, it's a kind of owner and the contractor, just the signs of some parking spaces are small, some are large. So what, that's, that's a relief we are seeking, that the, it's, it's, parking lot is functioning properly at this moment. But definitely, if something is a problem or where the cars are not being parked properly, applicant is always going to be in obligation to fix it. At this moment, because it's pre-existing, and pre-existing again, we have that issue of not having all parking spaces 9 by 18. So, so that's where some are 18 and a half, so we are, we are seeking kind of, or we have to do re-striping. We, we are doing some re-striping to change it, to make it more closer to conformance, but we are not going to be conforming fully in that matter.
Mr. Banji, have you ever had any issues with parking as far as the size of the parking spaces? But you've never had any issues with anybody complaining that they hit the, nobody's complained?
Yeah, from, from a functional standpoint, again, it, it appears that the parking lot does function properly. And I think there are, there are existing spaces in, in the, even the older parking lot. Really, that's where a lot of the non-compliances are. The newer parking lot, I think, is a little bit closer to compliance. And again, it's, it is functioning properly. So I think the benefit of having that additional parking, because the applicant, like we talked about, does require some relief for parking, and, and forcing them to comply with, with this, the actual standard, the letter of our standard would actually reduce the number of spaces further. So I think there's a balance there that struck, and, and again, I don't have an objection to, to the granting of that design waiver relief either.
Thank you.
Any questions to my right? Anybody from my left, questions? Well, I have a-
Mr. Chairman, I think Vina might have something.
I mean, I don't have any questions.
I was using up all of her time.
Oh, okay, sorry.
I don't have questions for Sri, but I just want to remind the board, if you may recall, especially because there's a parking variance involved. When we were in the pandemic, the council had suspended two sections of our outdoor dining ordinance, because we have an ordinance in place that requires site plan review if you have beyond eight parking spaces, and there was a fee associated with it. The council extended it twice, and it, it's still in place, so those two sections are still suspended. But just last year, Governor Murphy passed a bill that made outdoor dining permanent, and it requires that any outdoor dining is subject to review by the zoning officer, and if, if there are any issues, and the issues would be mostly concerning the required parking, then they would have to come back to the board. I think this is the best time for Pine Tavern to come and ask for that relief, because now outdoor dining is, they're allowed to have permanent outdoor dining seats. So in granting the variances, it, it makes sense to include all of the outdoor dining spaces. And again, like Rakesh said, the relief that is requested is not significant, so I would support the parking variance as well.
Thank you.
Would we have to amend our application for that relief, Vina?
What was your notice? I don't, it, it should have the catch it all language, right?
Yeah, we, we, it did.
So you're, you're, you're fine.
Okay.
Okay, I have a couple of questions. In the memo, bulk variances, you, you referred to outdoor storage, are you referring to the shipping container that's out there?
Yes, that is what we're shipping, we're talking about.
Okay, so you're asking for a fence around that?
We're asking for landscaping, Mr. Chairman.
Landscaping, now, will this set a precedent for anybody else on Route 34 that would like to have a container in front of their building by leaving it? I mean, it looks nice, it's got a nice white tree on it.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I don't believe so, because each application is reviewed on its own merit. Because of the location and because of the type that is used, we are off, we are requesting a more aesthetic look to the corner, but it does not set a precedent.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I could just add, on a legal basis, that Vina is 100% correct, it is a, this is a variance request. So it is going to be based on the specific circumstances presented in the testimony given. So if the board grants it, it's based on that circumstance, it's not something that can just be carried over to any other property.
Okay. Now, my other question is, in the drainage, you referred to an inlet that wasn't going to be removed, okay? I made several field trips out there, and the one little inlet, if, if it's the one you're referring to, that you said there were no pipes coming in or no pipes going out, it was, to me, a, a four inch PVC pipe with an elbow, either going in or taking stormwater out. And it looked like it was headed directly to the sanitary sewer manhole there. I didn't pop the cover, but that's the direction it looked like it was going, so if you could-
It's more of a collection system. It's from the roof.
Okay.
So the water comes in and it percolates in the ground.
Okay, so there is a pipe in there?
There's a pipe.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
No, I was just going to ask, so we, we did ask for some clarification on that, and I, I assume when you said you-
I saw the comment, yes.
Yeah, when I assumed when you said you satisfy our comments that you would, you would further explain that in future revisions. But so just for the record, the stormwater inlet that the chairman's talking about, it doesn't have any piping going out, is that correct? So it's, it's an area inlet that just percolates in the ground?
Yes.
And the pipe that's coming in that the chairman noticed is the roof drains that are dumping into the stormwater inlet? Okay.
And my last question is, could somebody explain to me these cars that come in and park at 8:30 in the morning and on your west side of your parking lot, and allow people to cross Route 34? I'm a little concerned about that.
Talk about it?
Yes.
So the chiropractor across the street, they were like, and I guess in need of more parking because they were pretty busy. So they had asked us if they could use the parking space in the morning for their employees, and then as they go, you know, everybody leaves.
Well, I, I kind of figured out what, what was happening. I had concerns with that happening only a few weeks or months after the medical facility opened up. And I asked our chairman, I said, what's happening here? She brought it to the township, I don't know what was done about it, but- She brought it to the township, I don't know what was done about it, but I take pedestrian safety very serious, and I, I don't know, I think you're doing a nice job here, I like what you're doing. But I don't know if I can support it based on that, because if somebody ever got waffled, injured, because it is on a curve, and it is a highway, so that's all I got to say.
Well, I mean, we can definitely tell them it's not allowed.
And I'm sure you could.
Yeah.
But if, a year from now, if I'm driving down a road and it's still happening, I'm not going to be happy about it.
Yeah, well, we wouldn't do that to you, of course.
But-
Mr. Banjavi? Mr. Banjavi, you'll agree to eliminate that, that use?
Yeah, yeah. There is a, the house next door, they own the house next door, where the doctor used to be.
Yes.
There is people there, so-
I see them.
Sometimes they park there and they go to the house, they don't, they don't cross to the other side. But if there is a people crossing the other side, we're going to tell them.
Right. Because it's, it's really dangerous, and we, on our board, we take pedestrian safety serious, so.
Mr. Chairman, just to clarify, you know, within the jurisdiction, you know, we can't, we can't expect them to stop everybody from crossing the street that might not even be emanating, could be someone walking down the street, just with, what's in, what's in their control and ability.
Correct.
Okay, just wanted, you know, make sure it's clear.
Mr. Chairman, so the one question I actually have for the applicant, the next door, the building next to you now, isn't that now owned by that chiropractor?
Yes.
So, there is the potential that they can now use that spot.
Oh, they, they, they have been, you're right, they have been using it, I've watched-
Yes, I just noticed that.
We can't control their property.
No, I, I understand that, and I understand you can't stop somebody from leaving your bar and saying, I'm going to go over and visit the chiropractor. I understand that. What I'm concerned about is you allowing people to park specifically for that activity. I, I-
We will not allow them to park there anymore.
Okay, thank you. Okay, do we have a-
Public.
Open it for the public? Anybody from the public like to comment about this application?
Well, I guess we could do it at the same time, Chairman, just because since we are, this is questions of the witness, but at this time, Mr. Chairman, since we are limited on time, we'll open up to any public comments on this application as well. So if you have any questions of the witnesses or any general public comment on this application, you can come up now.
Seeing no hands?
All right, Mr. Chairman, excuse me, Mr. Grover, is that your?
That's okay.
Oh, complete, okay, thank you.
Under 45 minutes.
A motion to approve this application would be granting major preliminary and final site plan with the various bulk C standards, variances that were testified to and included in the report prepared by our professionals, as well as the waivers, and it would be based upon the testimony presented before this board at the hearing this evening. There weren't too many specific conditions of approval. It was that the applicant did testify that they will comply with the comments contained in the board professional's report, that they would work with the board's professionals with regarding to preparing a landscaping plan that would be acceptable to both the applicant and the township. They would change the signage to be external illumination versus a black lit sign and install a, some type of drip irrigation, to get that correct, for the new landscaping being performed, and that's all I have. Oh, yes, sorry, yes, the last one we just spoke about, yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and that they will eliminate the permitted parking to, from the business across the street.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
Mr. DeBoma?
Yes.
Mr. Lenning?
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Cannon? Mr. Petty?
Yes.
Ms. Masala?
Yes.
Mr. McGyserick?
Yes.
Mr. Brennan?
Yes.
And Chairman Lowry?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone.
Good luck.
Have a good evening.
We're going to take a five-minute recess.
Okay, we can have some order. We're going to listen to our next application, which is 51-2023P Vision Old Bridge 4 Urban Renewal LLC, major preliminary site plan with a C variance. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, your professional staff, members of the public. My name is Peter Klausert. I'm an attorney with the firm Heilbronn Pate. This evening, I have the pleasure of representing Vision Old Bridge, Roman numeral four, urban renewal. And we have that unusual name because we are an urban renewal entity, and this is an area in need of redevelopment, previously designated by the board or redevelopment area. And we're presenting this application pursuant to the Crossroads Redevelopment Plan. This is property that's located on Texas Road, not too far from the Route 9 intersection where the CVS is in that area. It's a piece of property that is encumbered by some wetlands and environmental constraints. And we're proposing to develop the property in accordance with the Crossroads Plan. I should note that the property is actually owned by the township of Old Bridge, and your applicant is a contract purchaser of that property. The application is to be presented through four witnesses. I have Scott Turner, who is a professional engineer and has been working on the project for a number of years now. Michael Testa, our architect, who's designed the buildings that we'll be presenting. Frank Miskovich is our traffic engineer. And then finally, Allison Coffin is a professional planner to discuss the redevelopment plan and its interaction with the proposed development. There are 70 units proposed. They were all to be age restricted. 14 of those units are to be affordable housing to satisfy your affordable housing requirements. And there is a clubhouse, pickleball court, a pool, and a superintendent unit. So if I could, Mr. Chair, I'd like to have Scott sworn places credentials on the record. I would ask that the board accept him as a professional engineer, and I'll ask him to take you through the existing conditions in the site.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony that you're going to give tonight? Is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Scott, if you could just share with the board what your license is, that it's in good standing, your educational background, and your work affiliation?
Sure, I can do that. Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see all of you. My name is Scott Turner. I'm a graduate of the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I have a bachelor, a science degree in civil engineering. I am a principal with Menlo Engineering Associates with over 30 years of experience in the field of civil engineering and land development. I'm a licensed New Jersey professional engineer, and my license is in good standing.
And Scott testified.
You're accepted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Scott, if perhaps you could give the board technical direction as to open up the exhibit that you want to start with?
Sure. Can we open up the villa's existing conditions exhibit?
No. Peter, is this a new exhibit presenting or is this something that was previously submitted?
I'll let Scott give you the answer.
No exhibit presenting.
Thank you. Appreciate that. So we'll mark that as A1.
Thank you. So this is Exhibit A1. We'll mark it as A1. The villa's at Merle's Corner. Existing conditions exhibit dated February 21, 2025. Was prepared by my office, and it's the outline of the property as it sits today with surrounding areas for purposes of direction. North is basically straight up to the top of the sheet. Texas Road is running parallel and at the top of the sheet, running left to right. And then Route 9 is to furthest to the east on the right-hand side of the sheet. So for the record, the property is known as Block 21001, Lot 4.11. It does contain 39.65 acres. It has approximately 2,173 feet of frontage along the eastbound side of Texas Road, which is also known as County Route 690. The Madison Crossing at Birch Hill Residential Development borders the southern and western properties, as shown on the exhibit. To the east, furthest to the right, is a commercial development near Route 9. It's known as South Side Plaza. And on the westbound side, or to the north, is primarily wooded vacant properties. Marlborough Road is just off to the sheet, off to the left-hand side, heading west. So just a little background on this property. We've been working on this project since 2021, late '21 into '22 primarily, and then that place forward. There has been significant environmental constraints on the property itself. As shown on the exhibit itself, it's mostly encumbered with freshwater wetlands, wetland buffers. They've been verified by the NJDEP through a letter of interpretation that was issued on March 30, 2023. And due to the wetlands, we only have approximately 5.4 acres out of that 39 acres that can be developed. And I'm just going to outline it quickly. This is basically the wetland buffer on the west side, and then the wetland buffer on the east side. So we have this area in the middle that's available for development, and it's very irregular in shape. So we had to try to fit buildings and parking areas and everything to support a development within that area while complying with all the state requirements and regulations. In addition to the wetlands on the property, we also had to deal with the sewer service area. The sewer service area, you know, for whatever reason, did not follow the limits of these wetlands. It was a drafted line. It's a jog, you know, jiggly line. There's no rhyme or reason to the line. It's not on my exhibit, but it did wind up cutting through some of the area that we had planned for development. Primarily, it was down in the southeast corner where we had a portion of our building shown. And in order for that building to be sewered, we had to move that building within the sewer service area, which prompted the need for a redesign of the site after we had it engineered and moving everything over to make all the buildings fit within the confines of the sewer service area. The other option to leave it the way we had it was to go in for an amendment to the wastewater management plan, which is not a very easy thing to do, and it's a very time-consuming process, and it's no guarantee that you get it. So the applicant directed us to redesign the property, get everything to fit. The architect redesigned the building. So we now have a plan that we believe conforms, obviously sits in the sewer service area and also fits within the confines of the requirements of the NJDEP for wetland permitting. We also have, if that wasn't enough, we also have running through the middle of the property, and it's shown on the exhibit right here, a 20-foot-wide sanitary sewer easement. And that drains effluent from Madison Hill in an northward direction into the Texas Road sewer system. So that is an easement to the OBMUAA, and it has to remain. So we had to also redesign and design around that as well. And we've had discussions and meetings with the OBMUAA. We have pending applications with them, and they are, they're good with what we've got shown as of now, and we've got to go through their process for getting permitting. You could see on this exhibit, most of the property, and I'm sure if you've been past it, it's primarily very heavily wooded. It generally drains in an easterly and westerly drainage pattern. Everything drains away from Madison Hill into this property, drains into the wetland areas and the little rivulets, and it's relatively flat. You know, there's no real clear defined channel that drains it to some certain location. It drains sort of all over, sits in there, and that's why it's a wetland, because it really just basically sits and then, you know, winds up infiltrating back into the ground. There's some pipes that cross Texas Road further away from the developed portion of the property, but they are nonetheless, that's why this is a wetland complex. The property is, as Peter pointed out, subject to the Crossroads Redevelopment Plan. It's the Flex District zoning standards. This proposed age-restricted multifamily use is permitted in the zone, and the project's been designed to comply with the New Jersey residential site improvement standards. Do you flip to the site plan exhibit? No. Overall exhibit, that's it. Thank you.
This is an exhibit, right, Scott? So we would mark this as A2?
A2, yes.
If you could describe it for the record, what A2 is that we're looking at?
Sure. This is the villa's at Merle's Corner. Overall plan exhibit dated February 21, 2025. Exhibit prepared by my office, and it's basically taking that Google image and overlaying on top of it the proposed site plan. We blew the scale up so it would be a little easier to see. So off to the left and to the right of the sheet are the extents of the property. Same orientation, north is straight up. Texas Road is up on the top of the sheet, parallel with the left-to-right configuration. So we are here seeking preliminary and final major site plan for 70 age-restricted residential units located in two buildings. 14 of those will be designated as affordable units, and we are proposing one superintendent unit in the clubhouse. The two residential buildings, Building Number 1, which is a three-story building, it's 19,477 square foot, approximate footprint size, contains 39 units, broken down into 12 one-bedroom units, 21 two-bedroom units, and six three-bedroom units. Building Number 2 is also a three-story building, 18,902 square foot footprint with 31 units. So that's your total of 70. And that building has two one-bedroom units, 22 bedroom units, and nine three-bedroom units. The development will be accessible through a 28-foot-wide private roadway off of Texas Road. Upon entering the site, the first thing you really get to is the clubhouse building and a 17-space parking lot. That clubhouse contains approximately 5,132 square feet. It has a roof height of 25 feet 5 inches. You may hear testimony later on from our architect that that creates a deviation from the standards, and I believe what you'll hear is that we're going to agree to reduce that height to 25 feet by changing the pitch of the roof so that we don't have a deviation from the standard that's for an accessory structure. But anyway, the way the plan stands now, it was shown as a 25-foot, 5-inch height, and it has a cupola height, which is just in, you know, a design feature, of 32 feet 8 inches. The one-bedroom superintendent unit is in the front left-hand corner of the building. Behind that clubhouse building is a patio area for seating, a pool, and a pool equipment shed, all of which will be, you know, enclosed within a privacy wall. Immediately behind that, there is a masonry dumpster location that's located right here. That masonry dumpster location is really only to service the clubhouse building. So all the other trash will be handled internal inside the buildings, and you'll hear testimony further in regards to how that works. So due to the environmental restrictions that we talked about earlier, the two residential buildings had to be located deeper into the property because that's the only place they really would fit. That's the only area where the upland area kind of widened out enough to get those buildings in place. So Building Number 2 is located on the westerly side, and it's the rectangular-shaped building. This is Building Number 2. And Building Number 1 is the irregular-in-shaped building that's located closer to the rear of the property. Buildings 1 and 2 will be set back 37 feet and 152 feet respectively from the tract, from the tract boundary. And both buildings have a maximum building height of 41 feet 7 inches, which is to the highest peak. To the east of that Building Number 1, located here, is a small parking lot to support the residential units as well as a pickleball court and open space which will be used for active recreation. So between that space and the clubhouse and the pool and patio area, we have a total active rec area of 9,104 square feet. So serving the development are 24-foot-wide private driveways that kind of are scattered throughout the development, parking lots with 9-by-18 wide parking spaces, ADA-compliant parking spaces, and designated EV spaces throughout the property. The EV spaces will be installed. Some will be make-ready, and if there's any that are in need to be put online immediately, they will be, but they will all be put online per federal rules and regulations. The development does require 135 spaces, parking spaces, and that's taking into account the EV credit. And we're providing parking on-site for 140 vehicles. But from a zoning compliance standpoint, it's a little weird, but from a zoning compliance standpoint, we're actually providing 203 spaces because you get credit for the EV spaces that count as three spaces against what's required. So for every EV space, you actually can count them as three parking spaces. Nonetheless, there's 140 spaces on the ground for people to park. Throughout development as well, we have sidewalks that are up against the parking lots and, you know, gain access, obviously, into each one of these buildings. Each one of these buildings will have one main entrance in, and then the architect will describe how you move throughout that building. But the parking, obviously, as you can see, for the most part is, you know, primarily located conveniently next or adjacent to these buildings, you know, other than the parking lot that's up by the clubhouse. But the walk from either one of these buildings to that clubhouse is not very long. It's not that large of a piece of property. So we do feel like we have good circulation, good parking, you know, throughout the property for the development itself. Trash collection and mail delivery for the residential units will be handled inside the building, so there will be really no need for them to use that outside dumpster. And we're proposing a small compliant monument sign up at the intersection with Texas Road on our property, and it will be compliant with all the zoning standards. Water for the development will be extended in from Madison Crossing. We've had, again, meetings with the OBMUAA, and that's the direction we were told to go in, bring it in from Madison Crossing. And a sanitary sewer will connect into the existing sewer mains that are located in the easement that's running through the middle of the property. All other utilities are available, gas, cable, electric, telephone, and they'll all be brought in by way of underground feeds. Stormwater management, which is always the most difficult thing these days for us to deal with and address. We've designed the project to discharge into multiple infiltration bio-retention basins located throughout the property. I believe we have five of them on this property. We have two up top that straddle the main entrance in. We have another one on the, what I'll call, the westerly side of the private road in. We have one other in the back, most south-westerly corner. And then we have a last one over in the southeast of the corner here as well. And these patches that are open, these green openings that are through the wetlands and the woods, those are the discharge points from those infiltration basins. We have pending permits from the DEP. We've applied for those permits, freshwater wetland general permits and flood hazard permits to the extent needed, and we're working through their revisions. And as you know, they go through a very thorough review of the stormwater management system. There's been an extensive amount of soil testing done throughout the property, and we're confident that we're going to get the permits needed to facilitate the project itself. And of course, the project will comply and must comply with all the current stormwater management standards. The project will be lit with LED pole-mounted fixtures with a 16-foot mounting height, along with wall-mounted fixtures with a 12-foot mounting height. We have a minimum .5-foot candles with an average of 2.5-foot candles and an average minimum-to-uniformity ratio of 5 to 1 within the roads and the driveways. And we have a minimum of 1.0-foot candles with an average of 3.0-foot candles, an average minimum-uniformity ratio of 3 to 1 within the parking lots. There were some comments within the staff report about the lighting. We will agree to comply with the comments in there and bring everything up to the standards that they'd asked for. In terms of landscaping, we're proposing 170 trees, 427 shrubs, and nearly 600 ground cover plantings. They're all, you know, planted throughout the development, street trees, planted islands, you know, plantings around the homes themselves and around the clubhouse, and of course, along the front to make that an attractive front entrance into the development itself. The monument sign, of course, will have, you know, landscaping around that as well. And then we also have additional plantings that are not included in those totals within the bio-retention basins, and they're required by the NJDEP. There's a very set standard in terms of what we have to plant in those basins, and we've done that. Along the rear of the property, which is where we are the closest to Madison, Madison Hill, we have a row of eastern red cedar evergreens that are located on top of a retaining wall that will mature at a height of 25 feet that will provide a buffer from the neighbors. The grade differential from Madison Crossing to our building in the rear is roughly 12 or 14 feet when you look at finished floor to finished floor. Madison Hill is higher than us. So we have a retaining wall on our side, and then below that will be where the finished floor of our buildings will be. Their buildings, I believe, are two stories. I believe that's the case. Their buildings are approximately 25 feet or so from the property line, and it's all open lawn area behind those units. So we're providing an evergreen buffer to the best we can. We will, I think there were some comments in terms of trying to supplement that a little bit more, and we certainly will do that. The project does comply with the Township Tree Planting Ordinance. With respect to Woodlands Management, we did go through that calculation as well. We are removing 586 trees. It is a heavily wooded site. And based on the Township Tree Removal Ordinance, 843 replacement trees would be required. And as I mentioned earlier, we're planting 170 trees, which leaves a deficit of 673 replacement trees. The outside agency approvals are all basically pending. We have Middlesex County Planning Board for Site Plan Approval, and they're, of course, reviewing the application for Texas Road. Mentioned the NJDB freshwater wetlands and flood hazard, the OBMUAA for water and sewer. And once we get the OBMUAA approvals, we'll go right to the NJDEP for our water and sanitary sewer extensions. And Freehold Sewer Conservation District, we have our certification. And unless I missed something, Peter, that's my direct.
No, I think, let's talk a little bit about, we received a staff report dated yesterday, February 26, and we had the opportunity to have a Zoom call this morning with your staff to go through that report. And as far as the technical comments that are concerned in that report, the engineering comments, the site plan comments, you're comfortable that you can comply with those?
Yes.
Okay. I don't have any further questions for Mr. Turner at this time, but he's available to the board and your professionals, so I'm sure have questions.
Peter, just one thing. We did get a letter late this afternoon. I just want to get it on record from the Old Bridge Fire District Number 3, Mr. Matthew Bond. I did have a conversation with him this afternoon. I went through this letter with him. I made sure that he was comfortable with the application and the layout, and he is. He'd asked us to take a look at a couple of things just to help him with, you know, moving his fire truck around, which we agreed to do. I also agreed to meet with him and review with him hydrant locations, fire lane striping and signage and that sort of thing. So we will be doing that, but we're also going to agree to comply with his staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Turner. Vena, would you like to go first? With Tim? Okay, Tim, you're up.
I guess they're clearing some trees out there, and there's some discussion on how many trees are going to have to be compensated. And so one of my comments, I think there's some more room in here to plant some of those trees if they have to, you know, compensate for them. We had some discussions earlier today, and I think they're willing to work with us. I mean, some of the issues they have to deal with is, they mentioned that sanitary sewer easement going through there because there's some parking islands in there, and I would really like to see those things, you know, planted a little bit heavier. And I think we can, you know, beef them up somewhat because they're not all encumbered by that easement. Also, there's a note in there about seeing foundation plantings that see the architectural plans. So we haven't seen those yet. I don't know if they've been prepared. But again, they're willing to work with us on that. And I guess the biggest question is this easement in the back, this buffering. What they're proposing is red cedars, just a row of red cedars, which are nice trees. They're, you know, they'll get pretty high. And we like to see those, a little bit of variety in there, just different heights, different, you know, broad-leaf evergreens, like in that previous presentation, the skip laurel things, a little bit, maybe some hollies in there. So that was one of our suggestions, and again, they've agreed to work with us on that. Oh, no, I think it's a good plan as far as the landscaping. They're pretty thoughtful. They put a lot in there. You know, you can always tweak it more and I think get more in there, so.
Okay. Kesh, you're up.
Yeah, my, excuse me, Mr. Chairman. My initial thought is, we did have a meeting, excuse me, with the applicant and their professionals this afternoon. And actually, subsequent to that meeting, we updated our memo just to, you know, per the clarifications that we, we...
You're right, Rakesh. Yeah, that's correct.
So the memo is actually dated February 27, based off of the meeting we had this morning. And I did have just a question regarding the retaining wall along the rear, Scott. And again, Scott also uttered the magic words of complying with our comments. That's great. We do have a fairly extensive review memo with regard to some engineering comments, most of which are very much detail-oriented as, you know, the board members are, I'm sure, familiar with. When you have a project of this scale, there's going to be engineering comments, but there's no engineering comments in our memo that would require any kind of wholesale kind of changes to the plan, at least resulting from the comments in the memo. But with regard to that retaining wall in the rear, the proximity of that wall to the property line, Scott, are you comfortable that the wall can be built within that 10 feet that you have? We've had some other developments in town where there's fairly extensive use of retaining walls. And as far as the space from the property line, would you be able to do it without any kind of access onto the joint property to build the walls? As far as the reinforcement for the walls, the geogrid and everything, would that be able to be placed within that 10 feet? And the drainage and everything?
Yes. We are comfortable with that. That geogrid, general rule of thumb is, you know, every foot of height of wall, you have geogrid for about a foot back behind the wall. But there is geogrid reinforcement that's stronger than that, that cuts that length down that we've used in the past when we have conditions like that. And that's what we'll specify here. We may even look into maybe a different type of wall that's more of a gravity wall, not a concrete wall, a more decorative gravity wall because they're out there that maybe we don't need the geogrid. It's just too early to tell. But the retaining wall is needed, but we can do that without having any interruption on our neighbor's property.
And you're also planting the red cedars that Tim talked about at the top of that wall?
That's correct, yes.
Is that viable, given the geogrid?
Yes.
So I just wanted to get that on, just wanted to get that on the record as well.
There's some detailing involved with that, but it's done.
So one of the things that we asked, and I think, you know, the reaction that we got got was that you're willing to work with us. I think Vena's question was regarding that landscaping along the rear. Is there, in addition to the red cedars, is there a possibility for us to put some infill shrubbery to give some variation in height, variation in obviously in species?
Yes, yeah. Our plan is to intensify that area to the maximum extent we can possibly do it. It'll be a mixture of evergreens, some shrubbery to, you know, work with that height, and, you know, whatever landscape plan we come up with, we'll work with your office, make sure you're comfortable with it, and, you know, we can kind of go back and forth a little bit until we get something that everyone's good with.
Yeah, that is, I think, important, that should the board act favorably on this application, I would want to work with you guys, ERI and myself, to come up with a landscape plan that is acceptable, because in the past, it has so happened that these landscape buffers, you know, wear out, and in winter time, it becomes harder. So we want to ensure that there is adequate screening in terms of visual and noise, so we would want to work with you guys.
Certainly. And I don't, I don't believe we show a fence, a screen fence at that property limit. I tend to kind of go back and forth whether or not a formal barrier, a solid fence is necessary. We're basically screening residential to residential. You know, we're not building a warehouse, we're not building any kind of commercial or development like that, so we tend to try to stay away from a solid fence if we can, and allow people to enjoy the landscaping that's there rather than looking at a fence.
And actually, Scott, you bring out a very good point, and that was something that I was going to comment, but a letter, Kesh, finish first.
I'm just about done. Peter, as far as the operation of the facility, we had some questions regarding how trash is handled and all that, and I'm guessing that that testimony is going to be provided by someone else, is that right?
Yeah, I think Scott gave you kind of the general overview, but I think the architect might be in a better position to tell you where the units are located in the building.
Exactly.
But that's one of the reasons we have the superintendent on site, to be able to take care of that.
Yeah, but I guess just to, some sort of walkthrough as far as, you know, where it's going to be located, you know, how it will be handled for the residential units. I understand that you have the enclosure for the clubhouse, so that's, as far as the actual outside trash, that's pretty much going to be the extent of it, the rest of it, as I, you know, obviously based off our meeting this morning, as far as it would be handled internally and all that, that'll be a testimony you're going to provide later.
We'll provide that.
Okay. Just in terms of, from a site planning point of view, Rakesh, there is a door that's, you know, next to the main entrance into the facility, and there's a sidewalk that allows the superintendent, on trash days, to roll that out. Garbage will pick that up, you know, in that area, and then the superintendent will roll that back in until the next trash day. There's no need for any resident or even the super to drag that trash up into the dumpster enclosure area. Everything will be contained immediately in front of the buildings during trash day. Basically, how you put your trash out at your house.
And everything's by private hauler, is that correct?
Everything's by private hauler, yes.
I mean, that's really the only questions I have for the applicant's engineer for now, Mr. Chairman. In general, a lot of the deviations that we spoke of are really as a result of this redevelopment plan being more of like a 20-year-old redevelopment plan, so a lot of those requirements are sort of outloaded, and I think Vena and the applicant's planner will probably speak to that a little bit more as we get further into their testimony.
Okay, thank you. Vena, you're up.
So I don't have a specific question for Scott, but going back to the Crossroads redevelopment plan, right? I just want to refresh the board's memory, and right in the beginning of this meeting, when I was talking about the amendment to the Crossroad redevelopment plan, this is exactly what I was talking about, that this plan was written in somewhere around 2000. It was amended multiple times, 2004, 2006, 2008. This property specifically was zoned as Flex District. And what that meant is, at that time, when this plan was being developed, the Burchell Manor site was also being developed. So this plan intentionally created a Flex District, because the zone allows for offices, it allows for extended stays, it allows for hotels, it allows restaurants, so it allows a lot of non-residential uses. However, it was designated as a Flex District with an intention that maybe in future, Burchell Manor age-restricted development could extend into this property. So it would be an extension of the age-restricted development that already exists beyond the boundaries of this township-owned parcel. So in that sense, it is consistent. Scott is right, we've had numerous meetings over the last four years with the applicant's team, with the county, because I know today, it's not part of today's testimony, but they are on County Road. So the applicant has been meeting with the county to see how they can address the concerns, the traffic, which will be covered later in the public hearing. But what is being proposed is consistent with the plan, although there are a number of deviations, and that is something the board needs to remember, because when the plan was written, probably there was a developer who was interested in developing the property. The style of residential units was quite different. You have seen with the MBM, Woodhaven, at that time when GDPs were written, the redevelopment plans were written, quadruplexes were in. So most of these plans were written with quadruplexes in mind. Nobody is building quadruplexes anymore. The style has changed, the design has changed. So most of these deviations that are required by the project are actually related to a specific design of a quadruplex. The building that is being proposed is more modern, and that's why they need a couple of deviations. These should not be mistaken with a variance, there's a difference, because this is a redevelopment plan. When you grant a relief, it is a deviation, not a variance, and the proofs required are also different. And Joe can add to that when the planner testifies. I'll have more questions or comments for the planner when she comes to testify. But should the board have any questions regarding the original Crossroads redevelopment plan? If the use would have been completely different, then probably the redevelopment agency, the council, would have wanted to amend the plan, but because what was being proposed is consistent with what existed in the plan, there was no need to significantly change the plan per se or the zone standards.
Okay, thank you, Vena.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board to my right? Any questions or comments? Go ahead, Casey.
I have a couple of questions. First, in the beginning of your testimony, you mentioned the road is private. It's going to remain private indefinitely?
Correct.
Okay. Moving to the wall, I just want to confirm, the neighbor's property is going to be higher than your property, correct?
Correct, yes.
So how high was the wall?
The wall in the back is eight to 10 feet tall.
10 feet?
Yep.
10 feet tall.
Right.
So you said the buildings are 41 feet 7 inches, lower 10, so then they're 31 7.
I'm sorry, say that again?
If you're looking from the neighbor's property?
Right.
Because your property is going to be 10 feet lower, your buildings are going to look 31 7 opposed to 41.
Right. I just don't want to give the misconception. We do have three-story buildings. Their buildings are not, but their buildings do sit higher in elevation. When you look at the topography from, the two buildings in specifically are these two buildings here that are the closest there, and they are, they are off of Hernandez Court, just for the record, that's where they're located. There is a grade in the back that sort of drops off onto our property, and then that continues to drop as you get into us. So that's the reason why we're approximately 10 feet lower than them.
Mr. Lanning, to just add on to the point, right? I think, Scott, it might be really helpful, because I know we're not going to conclude tonight. When you come back in front of the board, you should actually do a site section, so that it helps the board understand and the residents understand the visual difference, and we can offer more comments. I would expect that you submit that section prior to the meeting, so that Rakesh and I can review it as well.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you.
That's not a problem.
Sorry.
Absolutely. So I know it sounds like a big number, but looking out from the neighbors, it's going to, buildings are going to look shorter. We got that?
So there's no way for us to completely eliminate the view. It's a filtered view, and that's why we use evergreens and a mixture of type of plant materials, so there will be a filtered view.
Recycling. I know you said the trash collection is going to be in the building. How do they handle recycling?
However it's handled here in the town, it'll be handled inside that building.
Okay, so they have like a separate chute or something that they would utilize?
I would suspect so. Again, I'm assuming...
They go hand in hand, they'd be treated the same way.
I would think they would be the same way. I think they co-mingle here in this town. I'm...
Yeah, we currently have co-mingle recycling, so that always interests me when that comes up. That's all I have right now, thank you.
Scott, if I could just clarify a point there, what is the height limit in the zone for these buildings?
I have to look.
I told you 45 feet, would you believe me?
I do believe you, 45 feet, that is what it is.
And how high are our buildings?
37 feet.
Are they 41.5 feet?
Hold on.
Here's a zoning chart from his report.
41 feet 7 inches is what we have on the architect's plans, I'm sorry.
Okay, so we are below the height requirement?
45 feet is allowed, we're at 41 foot 7.
Just wanted to clarify that with your line of questioning.
Too many numbers in my head.
Okay, does anyone else on the board have a question, a comment? Okay, well, here we go. I noticed that you, on your plans, you said that you were building 1.75 units per acre.
Correct. Let me confirm that with you, but...
Yes.
We were at the maximum permitted.
Okay.
1.75 dwelling units per acre. That's correct.
Now, how many units are you building per usable acre? In other words, the rest is all wetland, so you're not building anything on that.
Correct.
So...
I'd have to do the math.
It should come out to about 13 units per acre.
Somewhere around there, roughly, yeah, somewhere around there.
Okay. No, because the general, I'm just bringing that up because the general public go, well, that's not too bad, but in reality, it's 13 units per usable acre. Not that that's a crime or anything.
Right, it's a point of information.
Right. And the encroachment on the buffer, how far are you encroaching on that buffer with the building?
We're encroaching 13 feet into the buffer. So the back of our building is set 37 feet from the rear line, and we are required to have it set back at 50.
I heard the 50, what was the first number you said?
So the math is...
37?
37 feet, our building is set 37 feet off the back line.
Okay.
So we're encroaching into that buffer by 13 feet.
Okay. And we, you'll be actually encroaching a little bit more, because you have to clear to build the foundation, right?
Sure, yeah, that boundary track perimeter buffer, my understanding is that is for a building buffer, not anything else beyond just the building itself.
So when...
It's like a building setback.
So are you going to be able to save any of the old growth trees within that buffer that's left?
For that?
Or between building the wall and planting the cedars, I think it was cedars? Will any of the old growth trees survive?
No. The reality is that the work that needs to get done to build the building and the retaining wall and plant the trees back there, we're going to be constructing up to the property limit for approximately 250 feet in the back.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
Did you say that traffic would be handled in a separate, you'd be able to ask questions?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I know, it's also tricky, because Texas Roads County.
Okay, anybody else? Eric?
Go back to the buffer, so you're asking for 37 instead of 50, so you're coming in 13 feet from the 50. The existing buffer, you were saying, on the buildings behind you are what now?
20, roughly 25 to 26 feet.
Okay, and what are you, how much are you, from the, because I'm trying to look at the plans, and I guess I brought the wrong glasses today, so I'm trying to, I'm trying to read correctly. The distance between the closest building to your building, right? Because obviously, it's 13 feet to the property line, but, or 35 feet to the property line, and then another 25 feet to that back building. Is there, has there been any conversation with the residents out there to see how that you could buffer it even more? Like, not the actual spacing, but what to put there to ensure that they're happy as well?
No, we have not had those conversations. We have not had those conversations, but the buildings...
And we're not happy.
The buildings themselves are building the distance between the back of our building and the back of the Madison Crossing building that's closest to us, they're 62 feet apart. Generally, we try, obviously, to do the best we can on our property to provide the buffers, and we get reports back from the professionals, and we have these discussions in terms of what we should do to make it better and make it as best as we can, and that's what we're doing.
Mr. Turner, we're getting close to the 45 minutes. I'd like to open it up to the public, any comments, please?
No, no, right, right.
Okay. Step right up.
I might not need that.
Okay, no, you need it.
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Sir, before you get started, keep, please try to keep, two questions...
Absolutely.
Not comments, but questions of this witness.
Absolutely. My name is Jack McInerney, I'm a resident of Old Bridge for 45 years. Who's with me today? In the meantime, I have a question for these gentlemen. I'm going to walk over here.
Okay. From the boundary line, from the boundary lines, are you... So anyway, from this boundary, from this boundary line, from this boundary line to the leading edge of that building, how many feet is that?
Exactly. 37 feet.
37, 37 feet. So that is a distance from this boundary line to that wall. So you're going to put up, am I correct, you're going to put a wall, a building that close to my boundary line, am I right?
It's 37 feet from the boundary line, yes.
Thank you, dear. From the back, from this building right here...
Not to interrupt you, but it just, we need to pick, because this is on video, it's...
Oh, wow.
Yeah, can you just, please, just... Yes, sir, yes, sir. I apologize. No, no worries. From the boundary line, from this, from this building right here, this building here, I don't know how Cara did it, Cara built this facility, but Cara built this house and this, these houses, and then they put a deck in the back. From the leading edge of the deck, from the leading edge of the deck to the boundary line is only 13 feet. Somehow Cara did get a variance for that. So from the leading edge of that deck, 13 plus 37 is only going to be 50 feet. You're three stories tall?
Yes.
So that means that three stories tall, 50 feet away, those people on the top floor have the ability to look into her dining room. I'm sorry, your bed, her bedroom?
I understand the concern.
No, you don't. You're not living there.
I do.
Are these questions, Mr. Chair?
Are you pardoned?
Are these questions, Mr. Chair?
No, I don't believe so. You got to keep them to questions.
Yes, sir, I do apologize for that. I don't have any more questions, I just wanted to bring up those points. And thank you for the use of the microphone. And thank you, sir.
Okay, we're really running short, but we'll...
I have one question.
Fine, go ahead.
What is the reason why you couldn't keep that 50-foot distance? Because if you take the exact plan and you just move it up towards Texas Road, you can accommodate that exact plan, site plan, and you just have a little bit less on the front road by Texas, a little bit less of your driveway.
And before, can you just give your name for the...
Ricky Swede.
Thank you.
So I don't understand the reason why you have to...
So it's a good question, I understand the question, and...
You can keep the exact...
We did look, and I know you're not going to like the answer, but the answer is, it really has a significant impact on the number of parking spaces we can provide, because if you take this entire building and just shove it up 13 feet, we wind up eliminating, it's due to the geometry of the site and how we have to design the site to certain standards, we eliminate simply too much parking.
I'm not...
And it's all basically, the location of the building is a product of the environmental constraints that we have to design by.
My question then, you take the, from the front to the back, you take the exact site plan, and you're going to lose 10 feet in the front, it's the same parking.
Scott, could you, you can't move it all the way up. We'd love to. You can't move it forward, because that brown area, those trees there, we can't encroach into any of that.
Right. That's correct. It's just, it's not as easy as just taking the whole plan and shoving it up 13 feet to comply, because if we would, we would have.
Everything that you're shown, not with color and development there, is environmentally protected land that we can't infringe upon.
Yes, we do not have, I don't think... Yes, we do not have, I don't think we have two feet anywhere around this property where we could do anything with the layout. The, it's in there, it works, it complies with all standards, everything is compliant in terms of design standards. But we, we are just constrained significantly due to the freshwater wetlands and the buffers.
Okay, thank you, uh, we, possibly could take a couple more questions, do we? Just got to step up to the mic, please.
This is just a question, just so everyone's aware, though, there will be time for all comments and testimony at the end. We'll have that opportunity.
My name is Vadim Luhaviski Hernandez, my question is about what you're going to build, is it going to be rental or condos?
Well, with Mr. Sirdillo's permission, I would tell you that the form of ownership is not something for this board to consider. But these are proposed to be for sale. But, but it's, it's a constitutional issue, you're not allowed to tell people whether they can rent or, or buy. These are proposed, yeah, but someone that buys it could then rent it. It's an eco-sociological issue, you're not allowed to distinguish a, a development, it's a, it's a, it's a.
Well, I, I think, and I agree with you, but at the same time, if it is a rental apartment building versus a townhome, that can be addressed and that, that is difference in.
Sure, and the architect will describe what the building looks like and how it's laid out, sure, when we get to that.
Ownership versus rental is different than the design, whether it's a apartment complex versus a for-sale townhome.
Right.
Condominium type situation.
Right.
Do we have any other questions? Step right up.
My name is Frank Benetenz, I'm the next president of HOA, of the HOA. Getting back to the rentals issue, so if, is there an HOA first, an HOA association in this development? There will have to be. Yes?
Yes.
Okay, is there, will there be a percentage of the homes that can be rented in those buildings?
I'm just not going to address the question of whether they would be rental or, or for sale, I can't control.
You got to ask.
What someone does with their own unit that they purchase.
You got to ask questions.
If I bought, if I bought, if I bought.
I'm not sure the relevance of the question, Mr. Chair.
Question is, that if people own their property and use their property, they take care of their property better, is watchful eyes.
No, that, yeah, excuse me, sir, that's a comment. You, you have to keep your.
I'm sorry, a question.
Because we're running short on time, you have to keep your comments awake and keep it to questions for the witness that just testified.
So the question is, was originally, there will be no percentage of rental against ownership? That's a question, isn't it?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, that is a question, the answer is, the applicant is not proposing or providing any testimony with regard to rental restrictions.
And traffic will be on another time, another meeting? And, and also with flooding and drainage, will be at this time or another time?
This time.
This time.
I can address that.
So we know that Texas Road is a very busy road, and it does flood when we get heavy rains. Water is coming from that wetlands and it runs into the drainage trench on the right side of the road, on the eastbound side of Texas Road. And they do close Texas Road down. Now, the high point is where this entrance is to this community, and the flooding happens on both sides of that. If that road is closed, how do they get emergency vehicles into this complex if they need it? Fire, medical, and police? And is the drainage going to be enough to make that Texas Road not flood? That's my question.
Our, our obligation is to, our obligation is to meet the state standards with regards to stormwater management. They are going through a very thorough review currently with regards to the property itself and the surrounding areas. We are also more than likely going to have to go through a flood hazard analysis with the DEP, which is really where you start to deal with flooding issues, you know, on the property itself. Texas Road, whether it floods or not, that's not, we, we are not in a position to fix that problem, we cannot fix that problem. All we can do is meet the requirements and comply with the standards that we are required to do. And of course, the county will also have their own review of the drainage that runs along their quarter.
Okay, and I have one more question on sewage. Before they put that lateral sewage line, OBMUA, put it in from Madison Crossing, we used to pump our sewage out to county, to the OBMUA. And we've had many problems in our community. Now, when I read the documentation that was given, they're going to be pushing 8,000 gallons of sewer water into that line. Is that going to affect Madison Crossing to have the proper? I know maybe this may not be the answer, I can't get the answer tonight, but it's something I want to address, it's a question. Will that main sewer line that connects Madison Crossing to the OBMUA sewage, with this additional water going into that sewage line? Is it going to be enough to handle that amount of water? If we all flush the turtle out at one time, is it all going to back up? That's my question.
The answer is, it does have conveyance capacity for the Madison Crossing development as well as this development. We've had our meetings with Michael Roy at the OBMUA, and I can tell you with certainty that he would not allow us to even contemplate the connections if it weren't a viable connection point.
Okay, and I have one more question and I'll, I'll sit down. We talked about the retaining wall along that edge. In the, in the plans, they only showed for four trees for buffer in that area. It sounded like we're going to get a lot more, hopefully. The other part is, I live backed up to the woodlands, that wetlands on Seamen Court, which is a little bit distance west. And when I walk down that slope into the wetlands, there are days I cannot walk down because it's full of water and, and it's wet and it's dangerous. Now, we talked about the height and the elevation of our property juxtaposed to the retaining wall. Now, that slope is going to run water towards this development, over that retaining wall, and could compromise that, that retaining wall. Someone should look at that, I heard a lot of talk about this retaining type wall, that type of retaining wall, this type of retaining wall. Which retaining wall is going to be in place, because if it falls down, it's going to be a problem. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we're, we're out of time for this application for this evening. I believe we've finished with the, the direct testimony of this witness, so you will be, will you be providing, providing, excuse me, your additional witnesses at the next hearing that this is being carried to?
Yes, the next witness would be the architect, followed by traffic and then planner.
And just out of curiosity, would you still be, would the applicant be willing to have their engineer come to the next hearing as well, just in case there are any follow-up questions since we are?
I may even call Scott for a little more direct, depending on, you know, basically, we.
Just in case, because we had limited time here, in case there are some questions that we didn't get to of the public, of the engineer.
And I'll, I'll have my professionals at every one of these meetings.
I appreciate that, thank you. That's what we're saying, I'm saying, he's willing to bring his witness back to, for the next hearing so they can ask additional questions. That's all we, the time we have for this hearing, for this application tonight. Vina, when is this going to be carried to?
3:27?
All right, so, so the members of the public, so you can hear, this hearing is being carried to the March 27th Planning Board Hearing. That's the next Planning Board, regular scheduled Planning Board Hearing for this board. It's a Thursday, March 27th, so that is when this hearing will continue, the applicant will present more witnesses. That's, that's how the land, that's how the land use process works in New Jersey.
No, you, you were the second.
You were the second.
You were the second, we still have another.
On half of this.
You are the second.
This was the second item, we have a third application that we have to start after this.
We promised them 45 minutes.
So that's why we have to end this, it's not we're ending because we're adjourning, we have another application to come in to be heard. That's up to you, I, I'm not telling you what you have to do, but that's, that's fine, that's fine, but that's when this hearing is going to continue.
To speak, to, to, to present our point of view, our concerns.
Joe, Joe.
Without further notice at this point.
We have three speakers.
Thank you.
We have three speakers with a page and a half that we'd like to say.
That, the public comment, where the public gets to not just ask questions, is at the end of the hearing. So this might not even complete, obviously, we have lots of questions come up, they have a number of witnesses that's going to still come up to the next hearing. It might not complete at the next hearing, we might not get, they may, this may get carried to a further public hearing, it's just how the land process, land development process works in New Jersey. We, we will try to get through it at the next hearing, but it might not happen, and that means the public comment might not happen until a following public hearing.
We can't even be, have an organized discussion right now. But three minutes each.
No.
No, 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 that's not, it's a specific process that has to be followed for land use, for, for whether a denial or an approval to be upheld. No, that's not how it works, it's not how it works. I understa. I understand that, I, I've been before many planning boards, this happens, I'm sorry that, 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 it's, it's a burden, but that's just how the process works in New Jersey.
But you know what, guidelines are nice, but guidelines some.
Joe, Joe.
Not nice.
No, we can't, we can't, Mayor. We can't accept written statements because it's, okay. It's without, sorry. We're going to have to, yeah.
Where's my hat?
We've been moving pretty well, so. Well, they, they can't be working for the town and the DOT at the same time, if that's what you're asking, I might be confused. Casey, would you might be able to, just asking about a street marking? I was just looking around, I was like, you guys set up. Metro 70 units. Right, no, it's because it's a.
Welcome, Mr. Petrino, you can start. We're ready.
Mr. Chairman, on the next application, do you mind if I may, a quick introduction of the history of this, this application? This next application, which is the Alferi Olbridge Associates LLC, the green at Olbridge, is coming towards us while, through a settlement agreement through the courts and a consent order. This matter is, is originally was part of the settlement agreement between the township and various developers and fair share housing back in 2015 relating to the borough, excuse me, the township's compliance, which was third round obligation. This was one of the develops, that was developments, excuse me, that was included in that, that settlement agreement. The township was, you know, through the courts, if anyone's aware, the third round obligation was quite litigious, it went through the courts. There was a lot of, you know, back and forth between municipalities, specifically even Olbridge, and developers and fair share as to what the obligation number is, what development should be included, how they should be developed. And it was only through the, you know, the court's involvement and through settlement that it was able, that the township was, you know, meet its compliance through this settlement agreement. Since then, the settlement agreement has been modified and amended, there's been subsequent litigation, and this application before us is through that settlement process. It is something coming to us, what is called a Whispering Woods Hearing, which is a hearing before the board to ratify a settlement agreement between an applicant and a, and a planning board or zoning board. However, in this case, it is a little bit different, because in this case, there was no full application heard before the board. We had only gotten through, I believe, and Mr. Petrino can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it was just through our architectural testimony and original presentation, when we were, the board was, had to, had to make a vote on the application and it couldn't vote in favor of it or, and it was forced to vote against it because of those circumstances that was presented. So that went through the court, and so now, while this is a Whispering Woods Hearing, it's still going to.
and fair share plan and also court-approved settlement agreement between a number of developers, the township and fair share housing center. This property has frontage on both Lawrence Harbor, Matteawan Road, and Beyond De Avenue. It's designated on the township tax map as block 2150, lots 4.11 and 6.13. And as best I could tell, I didn't, I couldn't find street addresses for the property, properties. We were here in, and I don't know if, how many members of the board were here then, in December of '22, the application was denied. The big issues at that point were phasing when the residential could be built and whether they could be all built before certain non-residential improvements were constructed. And also, and I always say that Vena was our, was the champion for this, there were units on this site that were below, and I'm going to say, south of Whale Creek, although I'm told that that's not entirely accurate, it could be west, it could be, but I'm going to say south of Whale Creek based upon my idea that Parkway is a north-south road. So board did not like the fact that some of the units were below Whale Creek and that people could not get to, that lived in that part of the site could not get to the rec facilities that were north of Whale Creek if they were on the south side. And they had to actually go out of their development on Beyond De and go on in roads, local roads, in order to get to the section that was north of Whale Creek. So that was part of the litigation. So in one litigation, there was a, an order entered with the township because it was part of the declaratory judgment action that was the action that approved the fair share plan and the settlement agreement. In that, in that settlement agreement, Alferi agreed to move all the units north of Whale Creek. And the township agreed with the phasing that all of the residential could be built and not be phased over, over time with development of some of the non-residential. The second lawsuit related to the denial on December, in December of '22, and that resulted in a, in the consent order that attached a concept plan. And then that order was entered in October of 2024 and brought us back here for Whispering Woods hearing to review and hopefully approve a 529-unit inclusionary development, and I'm reading from the language of the order, consistent with the concept site plan. And as you'll hear from my engineer, Mr. Kuchera, Kucera, Kuchera, I'm sorry, we believe our preliminary plan that we submitted is consistent with the concept site plan attached to that consent order. So the application, just, just to remind everyone on the board that was here and for the people that weren't here, what we're seeking is preliminary subdivision approval to divide the property into three lots. Lot A is where the residential units will be constructed. It's probably approximately 65 acres. Lot B, 25-acre lot, which will be developed in the future, not part of this subdivision, not part of this site plan application, as we'd say. Then there's a lot C that's approximately four and a half acres on which a parking lot for the Bridgepoint condominium folks will be built. And that lot will be turned over to them. In construction, in connection with the lot C subdivision, that lot is a non-conforming lot and requires variances for lot area and lot coverage. Preliminary site plan for phase one on lots A and B is requested to construct a 529-unit inclusionary residential development of three- and four-story apartment buildings. You'll see those later tonight. That includes 423 market rate units and 106 low and moderate income units and various site improvements. I won't go into all of that now. When we come back and have the more technical presentation, we'll go through all the site improvements and the parking lightouts, the utilities, landscaping lighting, but that's tonight, that, we won't go into that great detail. On lot B, the only thing that's requested as part of site plan approval is a detention basin that will serve the residential units on lot A. And again, on lot C, we're proposing a surface parking lot of between 30 and 50 spaces that Alferi pursuant to a separate agreement with the condo association will convey to the Bridgepoint condominium. So what I'd like to do is ask our engineer to take you through the, just show you the evolution of the plans from what was before you and denied in December of 2022 and how that's evolved over time. And then our architect is also here to show you the product that's proposed on this property. And I think you'll be very happy to see the, the, the quality of what's being proposed by the Alferi organization. So, Mr. Chairman, and I don't think you will, if, unless you have questions for me, I'd ask that our engineer be sworn in and sworn at and, and he can take us through his testimony. I just have a few questions for him before I let him free.
Okay. Would you raise your right hand?
I would.
Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Radim, can you just state your full name for the record?
It's going to be complicated. My name is Radim Kucera, R-A-D-I-M-K-U-C-E-R-A. I'm a principal of civil engineering company called Civil and Environmental Engineering Incorporated.
Okay. Radim, would you just indicate your educational background and what licenses you hold in New Jersey and are those licenses current?
I graduated from the college back in Czechoslovakia in Prague in 1980, moved to the United States in 1988, obtained my license roughly around 1994, and been practicing civil engineering ever since. Never testified in front of this board, yet testified throughout the New Jersey elsewhere.
So, Mr. Chairman, will you offer?
Yes, you're accepted.
Thank you.
Radim, before, before I let you loose, let me just ask you several questions, although I might be able to wait until the next hearing, but I might as well put it on the record now. Did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the preliminary subdivision and preliminary site plans for the Green at Old Bridge dated June 28, 2024, a total of 16 sheets?
I did.
Okay. And did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the stormwater management report dated December 15, 2021?
Yes, I did.
And did you prepare the addendum to that report dated June 15, 2000, June 15, 2020, last revised June 28, 2024?
Yes, I did.
And did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the operation and maintenance manual last revised June 28, 2024?
Yes, I did.
Okay. If you could take us through the evolution of the plan to where we are today?
Yeah, my, my task tonight is actually to compare the previously denied application in terms of technicalities and what we intend to present the board with today and how it actually evolved. As you heard from Mr. Petrino, in 2022, we submitted a full set of, almost full set of plans for this preliminary, preliminary major subdivision and site plan application. And all the technicalities of it, I think would be boring, you know, if I started talking about acreages and everything else. I'll just point at the plan, what you're looking at.
Can you just, uh-
That's better.
Indicate the name and date of the plan?
That would not be, I can't really. Okay, so according to this paper, the concept site plan dated September 5, 2023, and it was attached-
No.
No, 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 no. The overall layout plan dated December 5, 2021.
Right.
That's what we're looking at.
And does that show units on both sides of what we're-
I would like, I would just, you know, for the, for the benefit of the board to, for orientational purposes, to show you, this is the Garden State Parkway you heard from Mr. Petrino talking about. Matteawan Road, there's a ramp not shown on this plan serving connection between Matteawan Road and Garden State Parkway northbound. And Beyond De Road is actually on the other side of the Whale Creek, which runs through the property in its south northern direction. You heard that the entire tract is composed of three lots. These are lot 613, 411, and 513 altogether, composed of roughly 95 acres. The first step of the plan development was to subdivide these 95 acres into three lots. Lot A, which is roughly taken, you know, this, this, this portion of, of the, of the property. And that's, there was to house 529 units. 423 of those were supposed to be market units and the remaining 106 were to be inclusionary housing units. The, the property was proposed to be accessed of, of Matteawan Road right across from the ramp, existing ramp, serving Garden State Parkway. The other potential emergency access was proposed to be via a portion of our property, which is this lot, I believe that's, that's still lot 411, and we call it lot C in our subdivision, where there's an existing boulevard-type road serving the Bridgepoint development. This darker, like a flag-looking thing is actually emergency, emergency access to this property. The biggest difference, as Mr. Petrino indicated before, between this plan and plan we are about to introduce to you was that the development was split into two parts. This was the part to be built to the west of Whale Creek. And these two buildings on the other side were to house about 52 core units. And these two buildings would have a specific access of, of Beyond De, Beyond De Road. That didn't fly, and that was one of the major reasons, you know, why this was not really well-accepted by, by the board and by board professionals. Technicalities of it, yes, we're going to be serving this property, we're going to serve the property with water, sanitary sewer, and so on and so forth. And as far as stormwater management, we developed system of basins. There was a dry basin at lot B, the wet pond on lot A, another wet pond on lot A as well. So it's like a cascading situation from one pond to another and then back to the Whale Creek. I can talk about CAFRA, that, CAFRA, that we, yeah.
Briefly.
Briefly, that, you know, at the time, we actually applied to NJDEP for so-called CAFRA permit and we obtained in, you know, that, that permit around 2023. So this would be in general what the original plan was proposing. I think that the architect can talk more about, you know, what type of buildings, but you will be more interested on, you know, in what the new plan is actually suggesting in terms of architectures. Do you have any questions?
I'll go to the concept plan that was-
Concept plan, yeah, they would-
And, and, Mr. Petrino, just for record-keeping purposes, that was part of the site plan that was originally submitted with the application, so it's not that necessary to identify that as a separate exhibit, you know, as part of the-
Up to you.
Unless you wanted to. I mean, I, I-
No, I think when we come back, we'll be more concerned about identifying or-
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I just wanted to check with you.
And then the second exhibit will be the concept site plan dated September 5, '23, attached to the consent order entered on September 6, September 3, I should say, 2024.
Yep.
Is that it?
That's the, that's the concept prepared by Minow and Wasco Architects. As you can see, I, I hope you can, you can tell that the access point remained, you know, remains the same, again, straight across of the Garden State Parkway ramp, but the angle somewhat of the entire, the entire- This darker, like a flag-looking thing is actually emergency, emergency access to this property. The biggest difference, as Mr. Petrino indicated before, between this plan and plan we are about to introduce to you was that the development was split into two parts. This was the part to be built to the west of Whale Creek, and these two buildings on the other side were to house about 52 choir units, and these two buildings would have a specific access of beyond the, beyond the road. That didn't fly, and that was one of the major reasons, you know, why this was not really well-accepted by, by the board and by board professionals. Technicalities of it, yes, we're gonna be serving this property, we're to serve the property with water, sanitary sewer, and so on and so forth. And as far as stormwater management, we developed system of basins. There was a dry basin at Lot B, the wet pond on Lot A, another wet pond on Lot A as well. So it's like a cascading situation from one pond to another and then back to the Whale Creek. I can talk about CAFRA, that, CAFRA.
Briefly.
Briefly, that, you know, at the time, we actually applied to NJDEP for so-called CAFRA permit, and we obtained, you know, that permit around 2023. So this would be in general what the original plan was proposing. I think that the architect can talk more about, you know, what type of buildings, but you will be more interested on, you know, in what the new plan is actually suggesting in terms of architectures. Do you have any questions?
Can I go to the concept plan that was?
Concept plan, yeah, they would.
And Mr. Petrino, just for record-keeping purposes, that was part of the site plan that was originally submitted with the application, so it's not necessary to identify that as a separate exhibit, you know, as part of the?
Up to you.
Unless you wanted to, I mean, I.
No, I think when we come back, we'll be more concerned about identifying or?
That's what I was thinking.
Yeah.
I just wanted to check with you.
And then the second exhibit will be the concept site plan dated September 5, 23, attached to the consent order entered on September 6, September 3, I should say, 2024.
Yep.
Is that it?
That's the, that's the concept prepared by Minow and Wasco Architects. As you can see, I hope you can, you can tell that the access point remain, you know, remains the same, again, straight across of the Garden State Parkway ramp, but the angle somewhat of the entire, the entire site plan somewhat changed from straight down to like a perpendicular to Matteawan Road, and also the individual houses were to surround or are surrounding like a green areas within that development. The clubhouse area changed its location, and it's now proposed closer to the, to the Whale Creek. But the major, major change, the biggest one, was actually that we eliminated, or this plan eliminates, any development from the easterly side of Whale Creek. And so all the houses, including inclusionary housing, are dispersed within Lot A on the westerly side of the creek.
Can I stop you for one second?
Yep.
If you, can you just point out where Lot C is and where the parking lot would be that?
Lot C is actually in this right upper corner of this, of this plan, and the agreed-upon parking, yielding 50 parking stalls, is to be built at this location.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, I don't wanna, kind of bother you with the statements, like water and sewer will be provided, obviously, and so on and so forth. The most important part of it is that the stormwater management system stays almost untouched. Again, we're talking about three ponds located on Lot B, A, and A. One is the dry pond, two of them are wet ponds, and the pond which used to serve the development on the easterly side of Whale Creek was completely eliminated. That was a retention basin, which is obviously not needed anymore. Another advantage is that there are no, there's no need for any crossing of the stream, which obviously is surrounded by wetlands and, you know, flood plain and these environmental, environmentally, I would call sensitive areas. So that's completely eliminated, yet the three basins originally proposed on this site, they remain the same.
And we'll have more detailed testimony about that.
Well, you don't know it later on.
Radim, do you want to bring up the preliminary site plan that we submitted to the board in June of '24?
Yes, they, what you're looking at is basically this plan, this, this, this layout just brought up to the RSIS standards, residential requirement standards. And it.
This makes me feel good, Joe, that a young guy has trouble with technology, because I have trouble with technology. So I'm, Dan, you've made my night.
And I lost my line.
What?
No, no, just kidding.
I get that all the time. I'm gonna kill myself. Probably the fourth one in that list.
I think it's a.
Yeah, that's it.
No, it's overall layout plan, 20.
I think it's four.
2023, it is, yes, actually.
Okay, number four, yeah.
Can you?
Dan, if you need help, I'm here for you.
I can go home. Okay, so what you're looking at is actually, you know, civil engineering drawing, just adding details as per the ISIs and your, and your ordinance requirements. Otherwise, same thing, couple details in terms of intersections and, and, you know, straightening out certain parking, parking details, but otherwise, same thing. This plan shows actually residential development on Lot B, and it also shows in accordance with the OG5.
I can't hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. This plan shows on the Lot B, the residential development of 529 units, and also shows on the Lot B, the commercial development in accordance with the OG5 zone as per township, you know, zoning requirements.
As I said before, that's not part of this application, so we have one more exhibit, if Dan can pull it up for us. There you go.
And while he's doing that, just to clarify, that last exhibit that we saw is actually page six of 16 of the site plan that was submitted, so we don't need to mark that as a separate exhibit.
Nah, we, yeah.
Just for record-keeping purpose.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, and this is the same plan, only the commercial development is not, is not shown.
And again, Radim, the only thing on B that is part of this application is the detention basin, correct? Because that serves the residential development on parcel A.
These, yes, these three basins are like a cascading from one to another, and they have to be built at the same, at the same time.
Okay.
Regardless of the development on Lot B.
Mr. Chairman?
It would be a lie from me.
Mr. Chairman, we really don't have anything further on the engineering at this point. We'll learn later on, at the end of this, that this hearing's gonna be, and I only know this because we've had a couple of TRCs or DRCs, whatever, that this hearing has to be continued until, I think, May 19th, when all of the detailed engineering will be presented to the board. But I would like to bring up, because I think this is something that you'll appreciate seeing, our architect, so he can take you through and show you the buildings that are proposed, including some of the recreational facilities that are being proposed.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I can just add, I know earlier we've been doing public questions of the witnesses after each witness here for this one, because that witness is really gonna be coming back to do the detailed version of that, we're gonna just do public questions of the witnesses at the end with both of them together. So, members of the public, you will tonight have a chance to question both of these witnesses. However, it is limited to what they testify tonight, so there will be the limited engineering and then the architectural testimony we're hearing now. But we will have an opportunity tonight to make your questions opposed to. When he comes, when the engineer comes back to provide detailed testimony, you'll be, have the time, the opportunity to ask any questions you want regarding engineering at that point.
Mr. Petrino, just so you know, I'm stopping any testimony at 10:15 to give the, 10:15 to give the public chance to ask, so just so you know.
Why don't we start with the rendered site plan?
Sure.
Yeah, let me just, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're going to give this evening is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Please state your name and spell for the, or state your name for the record.
My name's Jack Raker, R-A-K-E-R.
Jack, by whom are you employed and in what capacity?
I'm a principal at Minow and Wasco Architects and Planners.
And what is your educational background in architecture and what licenses do you hold in the state of New Jersey, and are they still current?
I have a bachelor's of architecture from the New Jersey Institute of Technology. I am a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, and it is current.
Have you appeared before this board?
A board of adjustment here in Old Bridge.
Okay, but again, Mr. Chairman, will you offer Jack as an expert in architecture?
You're accepted.
Jack, one question. Did you prepare or supervise the preparation of the architectural plans, preliminary site plan submission, the Green at Old Bridge dated August 29, 2024, 17 sheets?
I did.
Okay. Can we have, you have his, yeah, can we have the second one, which is a rendered site plan?
Oh, that's the full, oh.
Yeah, it's the next sheet, should be the next sheet. Yeah, should be, yes.
Submission, presentation, I think that's it, yes.
There you go. Thank you. Jack, what is this?
What we're looking at is a colored version, a rendered colored version of the site plan, the engineer's site plan, with landscaping added. We've colored the green areas for the grass areas, so you can get a sense of how much green is on this property. Just gonna point, so as the engineer pointed out earlier, we have a perpendicular access, nice boulevarded access off of Matteawan Road. We have a nice green island in between, and we have buildings flanking either side. That access terminates in a nice big park area, and on the opposite side of the park area, we have our amenity space. We have our amenity clubhouse and a lot of amenities. I'm gonna go in, I have a detailed slide of that area, I'll review that shortly. But the thing to note here is we have two types of buildings. We have Building A, and we have Building B. Building B is a three-story building. It's not an elevator-serve building, it's a walk-up building. And then Building A is an elevator-serve building. That building has tuck-under garages at the back. It's like individual garages that you could just drive your car into. It's like a regular garage door, like a residential garage door, and you just pull in, and then there's an internal hallway that you can access. I'll bring up a plan shortly.
Is that a four-story building?
That is a four-story building. Both buildings comply with the height, the building, the four-story building's 55 feet, which, where 60 feet is allowed, and the three-story building is 50 feet, where 60 feet is allowed. Next slide, please.
We got eight minutes.
Right, so this, just real quick, this is just a plan of that four-story building. Units along front, we try to keep this to the public side of the project. Then you pull around back, there's all the individual garages that allow you to access the inside of the building, take an elevator up to your level. There's driveways behind, and then there's parking. Most of the parking is behind the buildings. Go to the next.
Perspectives?
Yeah, just real quick, upper floor, where the units go out over the garages, there's units up above. You can go to the next slide. This is the smaller three-story building, two stair towers that access, there is no elevator in this building, it's just a walk-up building. Next, this is the club and amenity area. We're gonna do lots of amenities here. We're gonna have, there'll be a fitness center, co-work space, there'll be clubrooms, and on the outdoor, we're gonna have grilling stations, there'll be a multi-use sport court, play areas for kids, there'll be a pool, lounging areas, a lot of really high-end amenities that you expect in a luxury apartment community. We really wanna focus the, you go to that next slide, we wanna focus all of that amenity in that location. So this view, you see to the right, this is the three-story garden apartment building, that flanks the entry, this is the boulevarded entry, nice green space in the center, you drive in on this side, out on the other side, each side is one way. But you could see the well-appointed materials on, we're gonna do cementitious siding, and the, and the materials I speak to are the same on both buildings, they have a very similar aesthetic. We're gonna use cementitious siding, a cast stone material for the stone look, we'll have metal accent materials, metal railings for roof detail areas, just to bring your eye, as, as you look at these buildings, you can, the metal accents and the details will catch your eye. Next slide, please. This view is, to the right here is our large green space, so to the right is where that boulevard terminus ends, and this is the four-story building, similar materials, the stone, the fiber cement siding, metal accent roofs on the corners to really bring your eye up to some of those spots, nice metal railings in the balconies, lots of glass, lots of areas where we get some extra height in some of the, some of the units to get some extra transom windows. We think it's gonna be a really exciting, really nice project. And then, next slide, this is simply the other side, these are how the buildings flank that nice green space, so you have lots of nice visual down into that green space. Notice there's not an immense amount, this is not a big parking lot, it's just some parking on one side, some parallel parking on the other, and most of the parking is in the back where the garages are for the building. Creates a really nice streetscape. We're really excited about this, this project. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Our professionals, any comments?
I don't have any questions, Mr. Chairman.
I don't either at this time.
Ina?
I don't have any questions.
Okay. Eric? Any questions or comments? Okay, okay, go ahead.
You guys went really fast tonight. Are we gonna get another, I'm sorry if you can't hear me, you guys went really fast, zipping through them. At a later date, are we gonna be able to go through them a little bit slower?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, perfect, just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if I can, to the board members, this was supposed to be, designed to be like an introductory-type presenting, and then we're gonna get into the details at the, at the following hearing, where we're gonna get into, you know, the nuts and bolts of the application, but we wanted to just make sure. So I wanted to be, you know, you heard the professionals say no comments, no questions tonight. That's because of what it's designed, that you, there will be questions, comments with regard to this.
Okay, go ahead.
Just for the record, just to make sure that folks know, the, when we denied it, I guess 18 months ago or whatever back, the, the buildings that were on beyond the, were supposed to be 100% affordable, which was one of the reasons why that we objected to it. So I just wanna make sure that, that we're on the record in saying that, is that we wanted to ensure that it was, everything was mixed in together, and by putting affordable units by themselves and then, in essence, going out of, through beyond the, yeah, you're more or less, even though you're traveling on the road, you're going out of the county, back into our county and town to get to the amenities. So that was one of the reasons, I just wanna make sure that we clarified that for record.
Okay, thank you. Now we will open up to questions of the two witnesses that we previously had.
And please, members of the public, this is questions of the testimony that was presented tonight. You'll have opportunity to question the witnesses when they provide further testimony at a, a subsequent hearing, and at the end of the whole application, you will have general comment period in testimony, where you can provide documents, testimony, whatever you want at that point. But right now, this purpose right now is to ask any questions of the witnesses based on their testimony this evening.
Step right up.
We have some concerns due to the issue.
First, can you please state your name for the record?
Andrew Linfanti, a Bridgepoint resident.
Thank you.
We have some questions or concerns about the water mains, the issues that we currently have at Bridgepoint with excessive amount of water main breaks. And it seems as though we're finding coincidence, and we can't say 100% for sure at this point, but we're finding coincidences when there seems to be a water main break in close proximity to us, within, usually within 48 to 72 hours, subsequent to that, we have water main breaks in our community. So what kind of strain is that going to put on Bridgepoint, a system that's obviously already taxed?
Well, I don't believe there was any testimony tonight about water mains, but I'm sure in further, further testimony, when we have the next meeting, that can be discussed.
Yeah, I think you might not, not to break you, you might not get your answer tonight, but I think the fact that you brought it up tonight is important, because now the engineer has heard it, and they'll be able to answer it when they provide that testimony.
Also, I've been in contact with the, are you, you're with the association?
Yes.
Yeah. I've been in contact with the attorney for the association. We've talked about two issues so far, and I'll add this to the list, because I'm not understand, I don't think our water system and Bridgepoint water system are gonna connect, so I'm not sure what, what the issue is.
It's the town itself, the system, there's a ton of water main breaks in the water tunnel. And this adding 529 units is going to stretch the system that has water main breaks, irregular breaks, it's all.
Okay. Well, I'll talk to Mr. Melenic, and he'll explain it to me, you know, and we'll talk about it before the next hearing.
The town system is old and loads on. He's, Mr. Melenic is very well-versed on it as well.
You have a good lawyer.
Yeah, he's versed on, he's very well-versed on.
Any other questions? Step right up.
Hi, Kathy Reek, Hannah Lane in Bridgepoint. Just a general question. We always get certified letters. I'm in that, in that distance where we're supposed to be getting a certified letter when this property comes up for discussion. Those certified letters did not go out. They went out for last month's meeting, where you withdrew from the agenda. We did not get a certified letter for here. So please, next time, make sure we get certified letters when you're coming up to the, for the agenda.
If I may address that, Chairman, that, just to clarify, they provided the, they only have to provide the certified letter on the initial hearing date. You don't get them for every hearing. So they provided the certified letters for the January hearing date. At that time, they didn't actually, they were still on the agenda. It was on the agenda. I made an announcement that it's being carried without further notice, meaning no further certified letters, no further notices being provided to this meeting. At the end of this meeting, we're gonna provide that same announcement, that it's gonna be carried to the May meeting without further notice required. Now, if they don't attend the May meeting and they do withdraw, then it does, will require new notice provided for when that application. But as long as notice is provided at the hearing, the announcement's made when it's being carried to, you don't actually get additional certified notice for each meeting. You just, you, the notice, or the announcement, excuse me, at the hearing is that notice that you're getting.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
I will, I will at the end of this hearing.
David Merwin, Lawrence Harbor. My questions are for Mr. Petrino. As far as I knew, this was going to be a whole new application process. Apparently, there's been some deals that were made on, you know, down below, that, that this is not a whole new application.
Well, Mr. Chairman, if I could say, what I announced at the beginning is, even though it is a settlement whispering woods, it is being handled as if it's a whole new application, and all that testimony's gonna be provided. Yes, they're not filing a new application fee, they're not getting a new application number, but it is being treated as if it was a new application before this board.
All right, well, that's not my concern. This is for Mr. Petrino. Is this not the same project that was approved in about, I don't know, around 2010 by this planning board? That, that allowed for, don't say no. That allowed for like 129 apartments, two office buildings, a parking deck, and a hotel?
There were approvals in 2009, but a totally different.
Like I said, 2010 or so. So it's, well, it's not a totally, it's the same application. Different numbers, that's all, just different numbers. There's just, I know, there's different numbers on certain things. Is this not the same project that you and your client sued the township of Old Bridge on staging?
Yes, we talked about.
Did this not go to the New Jersey State Supreme Court and was upheld for the township? What?
Well, look, if you don't like the answer that I give.
Well, I, I, well, I don't, I would like the truthful answer. Did this not go to the New Jersey State Supreme Court on the staging aspect?
Sir, sir, I've been doing this for 50 years.
Okay.
And I always am accurate in my responses. There were two court orders entered, two consent orders entered. One in the declaratory judgment action, which resolves the phasing issue. I can give you a copy of the order if you want it.
Okay.
I think I have an extra copy.
And the township prevailed on the phasing, right?
It was the subject of a consent order, so.
Did the township prevail on its phasing? The planning board put a phasing aspect on the original approval?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I think there's a misstatement's being stated, or confusion, I should say, being stated. The phase, there was a phasing schedule in the original settlement agreement entered into, might have been, I said, they might have, earlier, it might have said 2015, I think it was 2017 that was entered.
The fair share.
No, no, 2009 was the application.
Yes, the original settlement agreement that provided. And there was certain phasing in there that required that after a certain number of residential development, then the office had to be developed. When this, the original application was denied, there was two appeals filed. One challenging the denial, challenging against the board, and then one motion seeking to enforce living rights against the township with regard to, seeking amendments of the settlement, that settlement agreement with regard to phasing. That resolved, neither one went to the Supreme Court. Both of them were at the Law Division, at the Superior Court. The, both of them resolved by way of consent order. I was representing, I was party representing the board in both of those applications, so I'm very much aware of that.
That's the later one, the original one I'm talking about, the 2009 approval. On the staging, the original staging on the 2009 approval.
Oh, okay. I'm confused, 'cause I, and I think Mr. Petrino was also thinking you were talking about the most, more recent in 2023.
2009, where 129 units, maybe, of residential units, two office buildings, a parking deck, and a hotel were approved, along with the staging, the widening of the Parkway Bridge, the two traffic lights, and one on each side of the Parkway Bridge. They were all part of the staging, and that is the, and now we're getting here now. He's talking about no staging at all. He's not, he's talking about no, no residential.
That 2009, 2010 is not applicable to this application, nor the underlying application anymore. It's a new application that was entered, that was filed based upon the settlement entered into 2017, based upon the third round affordable housing compliance. That prior approval, any litigation, any phasing that is not applicable anymore before this board.
Where, was alvery part of the original intervenor lawsuit that was mentioned by Mr. Petrino.
Okay. The 2009 approvals?
That's not relevant to this board.
Have nothing to do with the lawsuits. And the staging requirement, I'm gonna give you these orders, so you can educate yourself.
Okay, very good.
The staging requirement that was in the housing element fair share plan in the settlement agreement was the issue that was raised at the hearing in 2022. We asked that that be modified. The board refused at the time, and then entered into a settlement agreement. The township entered into a settlement agreement, amending the staging requirement. And I'm gonna, I'm sorry, your question?
Merwin.
I'm gonna give this gentleman both orders, so he can see where the staging aspect of this was changed, and I'm gonna mark it for you.
I'm just trying to get on the record of where we were and where we are.
Well, that's what I'm trying to.
And believe me, they're miles and miles apart. The town's getting screwed. There's no doubt that the town is getting screwed royally.
And, and, just, Mr. Chairman, just a point of order. I understand what you're stating, you're stating. One, just a point of order, this is supposed to be questions of these witnesses. We're way outside the scope. We've, we're trying to give the information you're asking about, but it is outside the scope of what this questioning is supposed to be at this point in the process.
Your testimony in the beginning, I'm questioning him.
I don't testify.
Right. It's, it's, you don't get to cross-examine the attorney, you get to ask questions of the witnesses, and the witnesses were the architect and the engineer. But that being said, we're trying to get you the information you're asking for. But just for the board's edification, that, what some of the, what is being questioned about regarding to the 2009, 2010 approval is not something that this, before this board's right now. That, whatever was approved back then is absolutely changed, and it's not relevant to this application based upon the 2017 settlement in compliance with the third round. That's what this board is, has to comply with, is this current zoning and the current application based upon those two. We can't look back to what happened back in 2009. It's not relevant to what this board has to consider in connection with this application. I just wanna, I need to make sure that, and we wanna get you the information and the knowledge you need, but we also wanna make sure the board understands.
I'm just gonna give to the gentleman here the order entered on January 2, 2024, that discusses the staging issue that he's asked about. So that, and.
Appreciate that.
Or you can call me, and I'm happy to talk to you about it.
I appreciate.
And then here's a consent order in September of 2024, which talks about the consent plan, which is what we're, you know, we're talking about here tonight. Again, when you read them, you have questions, give me a call.
Now, I believe it was this gentleman that was testifying as to the heights of the stories of the building. We're gonna have how many three-story walk-ups?
Could you go back to the site plan? I don't recall the number of buildings. I mean, the site plan in my set, the color one. I think it's the second sheet.
The rendered site plan. There you go.
We're gonna have seven three-story walk-ups.
Three-story, well, I mean, do we have any concern about the EMS workers in town? That's, that's a height.
No, these buildings are built all over New Jersey, and they comply with all the state standards.
Nobody concerns themselves with the EMS. They've gotta climb up with the stretchers and everything else and take the people down.
The stairwells are sized appropriately.
Thank you. Are there any other questions for this witness and the previous witness? Sepp, you gotta come up to the microphone, please?
My name is Dolores Gomez, I live on Hillcrest Avenue. I'm behind a church up in Lawrence Harbor. My concern is about the traffic flow. If there's an accident on 935 or the Parkway, it flows back into the harbor, which is a massive tie-up. I live on one of the side streets. If we come up, it takes me 20 minutes on a normal time to get into, onto Lawrence Parkway. Now, with this massive project coming in, and these buildings, what is it gonna do? Is there gonna be some other way for us to be able to alleviate some of this traffic? Look, you got all these buildings coming in. Now, it's gonna be another hour before I have to get out to go to work. If Route 9, there's an accident, which there's always an accident there, they're off shooting at 34 to come to the Parkway, or at the 35, go up north. What is, what's, what's the solution for this?
Oh, go ahead. Mr. Chairman, I was just gonna say, there will be, in a subsequent hearing, an expert that the applicant's gonna present is a traffic expert, who's gonna try, their testimony is why, how they think the traffic's gonna work and the effect is gonna happen. This board will question that, cross-examine him or her, and find out, you know, their concerns, and then you'll be able to ask the same questions of that traffic. But there will be testimony, by a specific witness will testify how the traffic is gonna work within the site, and how it's gonna affect the neighboring intersections and roadways.
It's gonna affect us big time, 'cause it's one in and one out at 40 miles, and even some places, 25 and 35, depending on the flow and where you're at. And then you have an ingress and egress for a school in that area, too.
Right, so we just don't have the testimony before the board yet, but once they, once the applicant brings that, brings that witness, I don't know if it's gonna be at the next hearing or not, when we get to that witness, then you'll, we'll hear that testimony. You might disagree with it, you might agree with it, or might answer some of your questions, not all, and you'll have an opportunity to question that witness at that time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Can I just say that, and I think this is accurate, our traffic assessment, traffic impact study, all this is on the website. And the improvement plans to Matteawan. So I don't know if you have access, but you can go on the website, and you can see what improvements are proposed, two new traffic signals, and you can, you can read the traffic import. So it'll give you more information, so that.
But you were aware that's a one road in and one road out. We're, I'm, I'm literally between 35 and 120 exit. So if there's anything going on, I'm trapped. And it's in almost 20 to 30 minutes to get in and out. Same thing with emergency vehicles coming in and out, police vehicles. That's what we're concerned about.
Okay. And again, I don't know if, I mean, it's a lengthy report, but I don't know.
I will go on and look at it, yes.
Yeah, it might, it might answer some of your questions.
Okay, Mr. Petrino, we're gonna adjourn the meeting? So.
Yes, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I just, just for record purposes, I think we've concluded, if you agree with your testimony this evening and the questions of the witnesses that were presented, this meeting is gonna be carried, and, you know, do we have confirmation? Is it being carried to the 19th? Is that the?
So I think the scheduled, on the calendar, we have a planning board meeting at May, on May 22nd. I was gonna send out an email to the board asking if instead of May 22nd, we could have the meeting on May 19th, which is a Monday, only because it's closer to Memorial Day. And unfortunately, I cannot make it, I don't want to miss this meeting. So it's a request.
So, May 19th instead of the 22nd?
Yes.
Anybody, well, it's a little, I guess, a little early to.
Well, Mr. Chairman, we need to make that decision now to know when we're carrying it, whether we're carrying it to the 22nd or whether we're carrying it to the 19th. And I think what the request was is from our planner, is that she wouldn't be able to be there the 22nd, so it's requesting, would the board be willing, open to rescheduling it to the 19th instead, so that we can have all of our professionals when this application moves forward? It's a Monday.
Monday.
Monday, the 19th.
So it's a show of hands, or?
Yes.
Show of hands is? Are you okay? Casey, you okay for that? Oh, okay, Casey, I'm good, I think.
Erica's checking.
Just confirming. Okay, so it seems like everyone is good for the 19th. So for the public, this application is being carried without further notice to a special date of May 19th. You will get notice, because the meeting's not gonna be in the previously, from the township, just that the planning board meeting's gonna be on a special date, the 19th versus the 22nd, but you won't get specific notice from the applicant, like you were referencing before, excuse me. So this is your notice now, that this hearing's gonna be carried and heard, just as we discussed at the Monday, May 19th, planning board hearing, which will be a special hearing of the planning board.
And it starts at 7:30?
So, just a quick thing, so for the folks that are listening, folks that are here, what was, was being said earlier, if you want to look at the plans for this or any application, if you go on to the township's website, and you go to the planning, it's oldbridge.com/planing, you'll see agendas, and you'll see the, all of the applications that, that we look at on a regular basis, right? As they come up, as they get uploaded, they will be there. So you don't necessarily have to go, I know I've seen some people taking pictures of the site plans for their own edification. You can go on, the same things, the same materials that we look at are available for public consumption as well. So you don't have to worry about taking a picture of the grainy screen behind me.
Thank you, Eric. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, good night.
Good night.